Penile County Board of Supervisors meeting for September 17th, 2025. We have a busy day, big agenda. So before we gavel up and call to order, we'll have Pastor, where did my pastor go? Come up and give us invocation, and then Rich will give us the pledge.
Let us all bow our heads and pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for what you've given to us, Lord. We thank you for the life you've given us, the breath you've given us. Father, I thank you for this great county of Penile, Lord. I thank you for every leader, every sheriff, every supervisor, everyone that is helping to make this county what I always pray a great county in Arizona. I'm asking for today, for everything that's going to be discussed, everything that's going to be talked about would be just God honoring, Lord, and that this county would continue to shine in the state of Arizona. Lead these supervisors, give them the wisdom and the knowledge, Lord, to help us see this county great. We thank you in your precious name, Jesus. Amen.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Could I also ask for an additional moment of silence for two young tragic lives that were lost this week with Irina Saruchka and Charlie Kirk?
Absolutely. I'll call this meeting to order. Please silence your cell phones if at all possible. First item of business is county manager's report.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman. From my report, it might get a little bit technical. I hope I don't lose everybody on it. Even for me, it's technical. But we belong to the Maricopa Association of Governments, AKA MAG, and they, we are in their area for ozone non-attainment. So the Santan area, AJ, Queen Creek, is all in this air quality area. The importance of it is if we went from moderate non-attainment to serious non-attainment, which is what we were in danger of, that would delay and potentially block funding for transportation projects that are significant, and it would really hinder the whole areas, which includes the Phoenix metro area, the ability to be permitted for advanced manufacturing type industries. And so what MAG did was they hired an air quality consultant group to do an analysis of how much of the ozone is being contributed from international sources. And so in the legislation, there's an exemption for that. The company did the study, and they found that if international sources were not included, that we would be in moderate non-attainment and should not move to serious. So they're submitting that this month to the EPA Administrator, and optimistic that that person will take that and allow the exemption, and that we will stay in moderate and continue businesses as is. So, thank you, Chairman.
That's great news. Okay, second item is presentations of certificates of service of employees 20 and 30 years. Bill?
Thank you again, Chairman. We have six employees to honor and celebrate with this morning. First on the list is John Fury, who is currently our Chief Adult Probation Officer and has been with us for 20 years.
All right. I wasn't sure if somebody was going to speak with me, but I've got enough to say, so it's probably good. So I want to thank the Board of Supervisors and County Manager for taking the time to recognize staff for their years of service and for their investment in staff over the years. I began employment in 2005 as a probation officer and worked my way up to Chief Probation Officer. Throughout the years, there have been many people who I am grateful for and contributing to my success. First and foremost, I want to thank my family for putting up what I've been told having poor life work balances. I want to thank Jacquita Cowley, who's here. She was my training officer 20 years ago. She spent a lot of time investing in my success and helped me realize early on how we can make a difference in this job. Ryan Osborne, who was my supervisor for several years, made me get out of my comfort zone and believe that I was capable of more and put me in situations to learn and grow. Donna McBride, who's also here. I supervised Donna for seven years, but learned more from Donna about valuing, empowering, and investing in staff, and also getting out of the way of good employees. I just let Donna run with it. Chief Saul Shune, I was lucky enough to be mentored for a year by Saul, and we discuss leadership daily, and I'm forever grateful for his friendship. Todd Zweig, Todd has many Toddisms that I play in my mind daily, one being what's the right thing to do. What also stands out in March of 2016, Todd came to my office and said, you need to go back to college and get your master's degree. It's an investment in you and your family. Todd was right. Judge Jorgini, Judge and I have shared many leadership conversations, usually through sports, but I've seen him do things and admire how he puts his staff in positions to be successful. I'm also grateful for his faith in me to lead adult probation. Last but not least, I want to thank my management team, who thinks differently but allows us to make the best, most inclusive decisions, and we still find time to laugh and recognize that we're here for something bigger than ourselves. Thank you, guys. And this is not my retirement speech. I always ask that.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board, thank you for giving us this opportunity to be, to celebrate John's 20 years. I think you thought we were going to hang him out to dry. We also want to thank you for your service to us in this, in your roles as leading our county. Thank you so much for what you do. Very briefly, John is the epitome of what we strive to be as public service members of the public and serving our county members. John is professional, he is ethical, he's a phenomenal person, he's a great leader. You can see the people who are here on his behalf. He is so well respected by those that he works with, those in the community, and in particular, the role that he serves in serving defendants, victims, and law enforcement. He's extremely well respected. Recently received a text message, he and his crew were in one of our communities working on apprehending warrants and bringing people in, and the chief of police from this particular local city was extremely appreciative and was more than willing and effusive of his praise, the professionalism and the work that they did, they continue to do. Want to thank all of his people, because John will tell you, it's not about John. John is just, he is, he's the leader, he's the tip of the spear, but we've got some amazing people in our probation department. You allow us to do great work, and we're thankful for you, thankful for them, thank you for, very thankful for John. Thank you.
Your Honor, Your Honor, could you identify yourself?
Sorry.
Because, I mean, I know who you are.
I'm just a peon in this process. My name is Rudy Jorgini. I'm the Presiding Judge of Penile County Superior Court.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Todd Zweig. I'm the Superior Court Administrator. As I heard John speaking and Judge Jorgini speaking, I thought, well, I remember interviewing John 20 years ago, and it seems like yesterday, and then again, I think about it, and it seems like forever ago. It's funny how your mind plays tricks, plays tricks on you like that. So I think, I think one of the most important things a manager does is determines who to bring into an organization. And I remember when, when John was interviewed, he was personable, he was articulate, he seemed very well meaning. We brought him into the organization, and he's worked his way up through really juvenile court and, and adult probation. And as, as my career continues to evolve, another important thing we think about is succession planning. And when I thought about adult probation and the direction it was to take, I wanted it to continue on that direction, but I wanted someone in there that would raise the bar, that would make it, make it even better. And that's, and that's John Fury. He cares about Penile County, he cares about the people that he serves, but above all that, he's a very kind person. If you don't know him and you have a question or concern about adult probation, reach out, talk to him. I think you'll be glad you did. Congratulations.
Whoa, 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 whoa. And don't go far, because there's a photo at the end of this.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, John. I think you're going to be speaking on the next one, too, right? Next, we want to honor Kelly Bowle, who's been with us for 30 years and is an administrative manager with adult probation.
Thank you again, Chair and Supervisors. When an organization has somebody for 30 years, you take the knowledge for granted, and I think, you know, Kelly's worked for juvenile court and adult probation, and we've taken a lot for granted over those 30 years, and I've seen it in my time working with Kelly. She's been on sabbatical for the last month, and we've seen how valuable she is. She has great knowledge, resources, and her relationships with both the county and state are just so impeccable, and we're just, we've been so lucky over the years. And, you know, Kelly's oversaw the budget for probation and juvenile court. I'll say she's one of two people in my life who routinely tell me I'm not allowed to buy something. And, and like my wife, she, she's typically right with that. Kelly will be retiring, so she, she won't be here for her 35-year-old. She's moving on to the next chapter of her life, being a grandma. We wish her the best, and we want you to know you're always part of the family. She is a Penile County resident, we know where she lives, and she will answer the phone when we need help. I know that.
Yes, it is.
All right, we'll do picture now. All right, we're going to...
Next, we have Anna Alicia Arvizu. She's a senior appraiser with the Assessors Office and has been for 20 years.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, gentlemen of the board. My name is Molina Lopez, and I am the appraisal supervisor for the Personal Property Department in the Assessors Office. I have personally known Anna for the last 10 years, not the full 20 that she's been here with Penile County, but I've been her supervisor for the last 10 years, and I'm excited to be her supervisor for the next 10 years. We work really well together. She's an amazing person. So inside our department, we have over 4,000 businesses here in Penile County that actively report to our department, and we have about seven months to get those assessments done. We only have two appraisers in our department that do that, so we have a lot of work to do in a small period of time, and Anna always is available for overtime and, and constantly getting things done during, and prior to our deadlines. So we've never once had a extension of our deadline, and we probably never will, as long as she's here at the, at the helm, running the show. So Anna, thank you so much for your dedication, for your super hard work, for putting up with me in all of the times that we're working 60-plus hours a week. Thank you so much for just continuing your dedication to this county. We wouldn't be able to do it without you. Thank you.
Next, we have Sally Leck, who has been with us for 20 years and is a Senior Administrative Assistant with Juvenile Court Services. It's Director Bradner here to speak.
Morning, Chair, members of the board. Jeanne Bradner, Juvenile Court Services Director. Glad to be here today. I actually wasn't aware that Sally was being recognized, and she's not here either, so I'm not sure what happened with that. But Sally has been a great employee for us. She is in our court unit and observes and listens to court hearings daily, recording, documenting what happens so our probation officers can be ready to act and respond to what the court is requesting from us. So we are very grateful for her work, and a lot of people call her and ask questions, even our field staff, to say, hey, Sally knows how to do this. Again, like many people that we've talked about today, Sally has a wealth of knowledge, and certainly we couldn't operate our operations without her. So thank you on her behalf, and from me as well.
Thank you.
Next, we have Deputy Sheriff Chad Nichols, who has been with us for 20 years.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, Penile County. Deputy Chad Nichols is a man of few words, but I can tell you, 1417 is all about the action. If you looked up in the dictionary under consumer professional for search and rescue deputy, this would be the picture you'd find. I can tell you, when I was trying to amass the statistics for what Chad Nichols has done for this county, the same thing kept coming up over and over again. It's more than you can count. I, I tell you that because when I asked the lieutenant over search and rescue if I could have the sergeant amass how many successful rescues Chad Nichols has done in Penile County and other counties around Arizona, they said we could count that up, but it would literally be too many to count. He's logged more hours on a Huey, by my rough estimate, than Hal Moore did in Vietnam. That tells you how long he's been doing this, and he's going to continue to do this. And I know the theme of today is retirement, but I sincerely hope he has no intention of retiring or that his classy wife, Amanda, won't make him retire anytime soon, because my beautiful wife and I hike pretty regularly, and if I was stranded in the mountains, this is the deputy I'd want to come and get me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Sergeant Martin Valdez, who has been with the Sheriff's Office for 20 years.
Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors, Penile County, Sergeant Valdez is not here, and to continue on with the theme of retirement, the reason he's not here is he's not planning on retiring, he's currently testing to be the next lieutenant with the Penile County Sheriff's Office. He's one of two finalists, and so that's why he's not here today, is he wants to continue on his public service to Penile County. Thank you.
Okay. Picture time. So all of those recipients, please come forth, and then we'll have our top-notch photographer come in and get a photo of all of us.
Three, two, we're going to do another one, just kids. Three, two, one more, just because it's super heavy on this one.
Okay, that brings us to item number three of the agenda, which is notable current updates from each of the Supervisors. Sir, do you have anything?
Yeah, first, we should close the doors.
I agree.
So even though it's cooler and fire restrictions have been lifted, this is not only for my district, but the whole state. That still doesn't mean we're out of danger. It's still very flammable out there, and just because it's only 105, still doesn't mean you can go hiking safely. They pulled two people off Camelback Mountain about 10 days ago, and usually it's people that are visiting from out of state. So if you have visitors, please warn them, tell them what it's going to be like out there, because they really don't know. So stay safe.
Okay. So Ray Goodman, did you have anything?
I, I think we're going to hit that here in a little bit, so I'm good for now.
Okay, you save, save yourself.
I'm going to save myself.
Rich?
Sorry, I saw you putting your mic. Thank you, Chairman. It's been a busy 17 days, so, you know, being a new member of the board, I have attended my first Citizen Advisory Committee, which I had to pick some new members, and it's a process that people don't really know what it does, and it's very important, because they actually get to see what's going to come before us, before it even goes to planning and zoning. So we have 20, 21 citizens who actually rate or approve or disapprove of projects that have come through Penile County. So that's not just, we listen to what they have to say, planning and zoning, so we have many eyes looking on the projects that could be coming before us. Also, I've been to Penile Partnership this month. Eloy just opened up a, or getting ready to open up a new exceptional health. It's a microhospital. We have one in Maricopa, they got one in Prescott, they've got one in Buck, oh God, Bullhead City. These are very important to small cities like, you know, like I said, the city of Maricopa. It's a microhospital, they have about 10, 10 rooms on one side, nine rooms on the other. They have a surgical center, so this is really going to help the city of Eloy and supply, and surrounding areas who don't have a big hospital. So it's a great thing. Also attended City of Coolidge City Council meeting. Also, another great thing, that Ponderosa broadband coming to the city of Maricopa and the Hidden Valley Thunderbird Farms area, which is important, because right now, a lot of them have to just get satellite, and it doesn't really work so well. So this new broadband coming to, again, a, a, the Hidden Valley Thunderbird Farms area is a big deal. Then, of course, 9/11, which is near and dear to my heart. I'm from New York. 9/11 means a lot to me, and I haven't missed a flag ceremony since then, and, you know, we get to pray for our fallen people who unfortunately passed away due to a violent act. And then also attended Maricopa Cafe, and what that is, is, again, a lot of these smaller cities such as Maricopa, Eloy, Florence, we don't have the services. Well, these people came to the city of Maricopa to tell them where they can get services, and very important for our seniors, mental health and many other different services, which most people that were in that room, which was about 30, 40 people, seniors, didn't know what services are locally available, and let alone within 20 minutes. So it's very important that we continue to see these for our seniors, because, again, we are smaller cities, so, again, and then on the 13th, I went to do at, in Coolidge, honor our heroes, cleaning gravestones. So that was another important day, another day of, you know, honoring our heroes. Also, I attended a workshop last night for businesses, and it's very important, again, smaller businesses need to know how to reach out to their community, and in Maricopa did a nice piece on that. Also, Maricopa City Council last night. Today, I'll be meeting with Silver King Solar Open House to see about this solar project that's going on, and then Queen Creek City Council tonight. So keeping it busy. Thank you.
You get more miles on your car than I do, is that right? I think, man, oh, this last week, I was in, I guess I'll have to match some of yours. So I was out in Eloy for a neighborhood meeting on solar earlier in the week, and then last night up in Salmon Well for the same type of issue, and just keeping it real, staying, staying busy.
All right, well, thank you. And I only have kind of an update for the city of Casa Grande this Saturday, the 20th. They have, what do they, they call it a, in-service day, I believe, National Day of Service Projects, and so if you're interested in volunteering and helping out the community, you can go to Carv McNatt Park, that's 1115 North Brown in Casa Grande, and they do a lot of good things. They go out and they help indigent people clean their yards or pick up trash in different areas. So it's a, it's a, it's a very successful day, and it really kind of brings the community together. So if you're interested in that. That's all I have for today. So moving on to item number four, we'll, Dana Lewis, and an update on Elections Department.
Good morning, Chairman Miller, Vice Chairman Clora, members of the board, Dana Lewis, Penile County Recorder. Just want to update you, we are in, in what we call an almost overlap time. We are at the tail end of the Congressional District 7 Special General Election. Affected are 3,954 active registrants for Penile County, four precincts, sent early ballots totaled 2,500 at this time, and we have already received 507 back in early. That's about 11% turnout and did surpass what we had in the primary election. We have two to be cured, and voters can contact 520-866-7560 to cure that ballot. The deadline has passed to return a ballot via United States Postal Service and also to request an early ballot. If you still have that early ballot in your property, we encourage you to deposit in a county drop box by this Friday. Poll worker trainings are complete. Equipment delivery is scheduled to be delivered to the precinct-based polling places for tomorrow. The last day to vote early and in person is this Friday at 7:00 p.m. Election Day, of course, is September 23rd for the Special General Election. Polls open at 6:00 a.m. and close at 7:00 p.m. The hand count audit names have been received by the deadline from the party chairs, and the hand count audit will take place at the votes facility on 9/24. The canvas of this election is scheduled with the Board of Supervisors for October 8th. Again, we are overlapping time. We will be going into the November jurisdictional elections. Affected would be the city of Apache Junction, Casa Grande. The Superstition Fire and Medical District has a proposition, and school districts participating are Casa Grande Elementary, Casa Grande Union High, Florence Unified School District, J.O. Combs Unified School District, and the Superior Unified School District. Special taxing districts that have gone to resolution to cancel have been the Flood District of Maricopa, the Analog Peep, Dwyd, New Magma Irrigation and Drainage, Queen Creek Irrigation and Drainage, Maricopa Stanfield Irrigation and Drainage, and San Carlos Irrigation and Drainage. All upcoming deadlines for the jurisdictional November elections can be found on the Penile Votes website. Just one quick one before the next time I come up to the podium to give you guys an update, is Yuakava ballots for the jurisdictions go out this Saturday. Any questions?
Any questions for Dana?
I have, oh, sure. I have a question related, but not related. You know, we get contacted by our residents all the time, and I've had two, and I just had another one. I had a longtime acquaintance and friend passed away this week. I got contacted yesterday by his son.
and friend passed away this week. I got contacted yesterday by his son. Do they now have to contact your office and let them know that he will be off the voting rolls? Or do they need to do nothing? So what, how should I counsel them on this?
Chairman Miller, Vice Chairman Clor, Supervisors Surti, and members of the board. They can contact our office at 520-866-6859. We will walk them through the process. Normally, what will happen is we'll receive an update on our dashboard, that they have stopped receiving benefits. We interact with the state systems. And so we'll get a notification of the passing. In the event that that person were to pass out of state or out of country, sometimes there's more of a lag in that. So one of the ways to activate or to increase the deadline on that is just for them to call us. And then we can send them a form.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
Brings us to item number five on the agenda, which is the recognition of the Pinal County Medical Examiner's Office. I believe we have a video for this as well. Doctor Who, you want to do the video first? Okay.
The main duty of a medical examiner's office is to investigate deaths, to determine cause of death and manner of death, to provide closure for families when there are questions.
Cause of death, which is the initial injury or disease process that initiated a sequence of events that ultimately led to a person's death. And the manner of death is the classification as far as how the death occurred.
Some deaths are easily investigated.
For example, if we take an individual that was involved in a motor vehicle collision.
Other deaths are way complicated, way more complicated, and take hours and hours of review of medical records, death circumstances, case scenario. Sometimes the autopsy itself takes several hours.
Toxicology, histology, other ancillary testing before we can provide the family with the answers as far as the cause and manner of death for their loved one.
So every case is different. And we get a lot of variety here at the Pinal County Medical Examiner's Office. We have a variety of people with a variety of different education backgrounds.
Pathologists, they've got many years of experience between the two of them.
Went to medical school, did fellowship training after residency training to be a forensic pathologist.
We actually have the highest number of board-certified medical legal investigators in the state of Arizona.
We also have forensic technicians who help us in the autopsy suite. Accreditation by the National Association of Medical Examiners is sort of the gold standard for forensic pathology practice.
Essentially, tells the community that we serve that we have met the highest standards that are established for medical examiners and coroners' offices. There are only about 60 to 70 offices nationally that have been accredited by the National Association of Medical Examiners. Keep in mind, there are over 1,000 medical legal investigation systems in the United States. So again, of those approximately 1,000, only about 60 to 70 of those have achieved name accreditation.
We're working very hard for that moment. And the moment can, of course, as we're very excited. And this is probably the most important milestone of this office.
The accreditation itself comprises of an application, a checklist criteria that comprises of over 250 items. And that starts from anything from our facilities. So do we have proper lobby areas? Do we have proper areas for family to come in and meet with them? It takes a look at our investigations procedures, our morgue procedures, all the aspects of the office that we do. It takes a look at those and ensures that we meet certain standards or certain criteria. Once we submit that to National Association of Medical Examiners, we actually have a physical onsite inspection, where an individual comes out and verifies all the information that we've submitted to them to ensure that we do, in fact, meet those standards that are, that have been established.
This is an outcome of, like, every man and woman's hard work in this office. And also county leadership, continued support. Without their support, you know, we can't reach that far.
When we were in the old building, before we got this new facility, probably could have met all of the marks on the checklist for accreditation for our procedures. But we would not have qualified for accreditation based on our facility.
County leadership assistance or leadership's guidance, well, the building, which is the fundamental elements of the entire accreditation. Without the building, we cannot even apply for that. Because you guys, you know, way below average in terms of facility. Now we have the building.
It's, it's a new facility with up-to-date technology and enough space for all of our investigator staff and our administrative staff, for everybody to be able to do their job well.
More inspired is to keep continuing doing what we're doing to maintain the accreditation. That's most important. It's a beginning of a long journey, journey to success, and a beginning of a commitment, a long-term commitment to providing quality service to the county.
It's not the bare minimum that we're striving for. We want to make sure that we stand out from other offices, not only in the state, but within the country as well.
I am proud of it. It was a lot of work to get here. And I am proud of it.
Doctor Who?
Before the doctor speaks, I want to tell you, I, I experienced the beginnings of this, of this department many, many years ago. And it was almost embarrassing to what we had when we started down this path years ago. And because of the commitment by our staff, our leadership at the county manager's office, you can see where we've gone with this. And you guys, you've done a great job. And I'm very proud of everything we do there.
It is exactly what I tried to say. I mean, achievement like this is never a one person's effort or one officer's effort. It's built on the community's effort, entire team. So with community collaboration and wavering support from the county leadership, the board, and the support from public interesting us with their loved one, and the support from the county leadership, especially, I see county manager Leo Lou, who was responsible for putting this office on the map nearly 10 years ago. We didn't exist back then. And then Mariella Shepherd has been providing us with precious administrative guidance, support, encouragement. And she is the driving force of this accreditation application. And of course, Andre Davis, who's the person that actually put together the package. So I greatly appreciate that. Additionally, our partnership with other offices in the county such as County Attorney's Office, Public Health, PCSO, they all, they all provide crucial assistance to us in our daily operation. Great, greatly appreciate that. Above all, thanks to every supervisors on this board and any previous board for all your yes votes for the past 10 years regarding our office. So thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Board of Supervisors, thank you for this opportunity to, to recognize this achievement for our office. I won't take too much of your time. Just want to spend some time bragging on us a little bit here. I, I'm fortunate to have this position and to come in every day and see the evolution of this office from where we were to where we are now. We have essentially evolved from an office that was, to be frank, kind of a glorified transport service, one in which we removed decedents from residences or the scene of death, and then transported them down to Pima County, where the actual examination would take place, to now being a name-accredited medical examiner's office. As the video stated, I checked the date of this morning. Nationwide, there are only 85 offices throughout the nation that have achieved this. Mind you, there are over 1,000 medical examiner and coroner's offices throughout the United States, and 85 have achieved this. We are now the fourth accredited office in the state, and we have the most board-certified investigators in the state of Arizona. I do want to thank our entire team, from our physicians to our administrative staff, our investigative staff, our forensic technicians, our interns. They were all part of making this a success. We have, unapologetically in this iteration of our office, strived to be the best in what we do. And we've achieved that. We have a $500,000 grant for missing and unidentified human remains that we were awarded. There were only three offices throughout the United States that were awarded that grant, one of which was the New York City Medical Examiner's Office. So we are on par with that office there. Through that grant, we have identified 10 individuals that were long-term unidentified. Two of those were homicides. So those are cold case homicides that law enforcement could not work, because we didn't know who that person was. So we have made efforts to identify those folks. And I believe one of them was from 1986, 1980s, I believe. So this is a huge accomplishment for our office. So thank you for your support. County Manager Lou, thank you for your support. Deputy County Manager Shepherd, thank you so much. This is huge for us. And thank you for the time to kind of brag and highlight our success here. Thank you.
Thank you. That's great. Item number six, presentation on the housing plan poster contest. Who do we have here? Heather and Rolanda? Oh, well, there they are. There Heather is.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Heather Patel with the Office of Budget and Finance. And I'm here with...
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Rolanda Seef is Director of Housing Authority.
Good morning, Board. Myron Steele, Operations Manager for Housing Authority.
We're here before you this morning, because Pinal County had applied for some funding from the Arizona Department of Housing to complete a housing plan. We are in that process right now and hope to bring some, some final products back to you summer, next, next year. But part of the process is education. And we, with the help of our consultant, put out a housing poster contest. And it is our intention to use the winner of the contest for the cover of the plan. Our second place winner will be on the back cover. And then the other two will be within the document. So it's a nice little celebration of housing and what it means to the children within our community. Rolanda is going to talk more about who the winners were and what their award is.
Presentation of the Housing Plan Poster Contest winners include our first place winner, Mackenzie Rodriguez. Our second place... Our second place winner is Iri Morales. The third place winner was Ryder Robira. And our fourth place winner was Fred Vila. In addition to our first place winner being, her art being displayed on the front cover of the housing plan, the first place winner is also the recipient of a $250 shopping spree with myself. And for our second place winner, in addition to their art being displayed on the back cover of the plan, will also receive a $50 Walmart gift card.
Are we going to get a photo?
That would be lovely. Yes, we would love that.
Great. Let's go get Kevin. Thank you, everyone. Okay, this brings us to item number seven on the agenda, which is a discussion approval or disapproval of a resolution of Santan Valley incorporation, the resolution of an order of incorporating and the boundaries anticipated in Supervisor District 2. So I have Joe Ortiz. There is Joe.
Yep.
I hadn't seen you in the audience.
I'm here.
I wanted to be here.
Hiding in the back, yeah. Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chair, Board of Supervisors, Joe Ortiz, Development Services Managing Director. Yes, it's my honor, privilege, and bring you this monumental item here. Basically, the discussion approval, disapproval of the resolution 091725STV, which is the Santan Valley Incorporation Resolution for Order of Incorporation and Boundary Acceptance. As you mentioned, all within the District of Supervisor District Number 2. This resolution was the resolution and the supporting documents, which are a legal description and Matt exhibits, have been reviewed and vetted through county staff and through coordination with Mr. Alan Quest, who's here in the audience, and his team. I believe Alan may want to say a few words as well.
Mr. Ortiz, just a quick note.
Before we do that.
I'm actually part of that, too.
So we need to include District 4?
Yeah. Sorry. District 2 and 4. Sorry.
Thank you.
Yep. Don't want to exclude.
Is Mr. Quest here?
I thought I saw him earlier. There. Alan?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Alan Quest with the Law Firm of Pierce Coleman. Having worked at the county for, for over seven years, it always feels a bit like a family reunion to come back. And it's a pleasure to, to present once again before this board, particularly on such historic occasion, as Joe noted, a monumental occasion. And I don't think those adjectives are an exaggeration. This is a historic moment, not only for Santan Valley, not only for Pinal County, but for the state of Arizona as a whole. The two items that you have before you this morning, Board, mark the creation of the first new municipality in the state over the, over the past decade, and the largest incorporation in Arizona's history, likely one of the largest incorporations in our nation. So this truly is a historic moment. As legal counsel for the incorporation process, or I should say, for a portion of this lengthy incorporation process, I joined the incorporation committee about a year and a half ago. I joined and have been assistant... there in the beginning, even had lawsuits filed against them because they took this effort on. And we need to remember those individuals. It's not just, as was stated, it's not just one person, it's been efforts that's been attempted several times. This is the first time, though, that the efforts went far enough to be able to put it on a ballot and put it before the citizens. And it's going to be extremely weight off of my shoulders to be able to share the love that this new community is going to be able to provide as they get their voice and be able to now act rather than being acted upon. I've always said that. Life is a lot like that. We either act or we get acted upon. And this community now is going to be able to do that and have their own voice. So with that, Supervisor, I would like to make a motion that we accept item number seven as presented with addition to where it states Supervisor District Two and Supervisor District Four. I'm sharing the love, baby.
Thank you. I'll second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Ayes have it. Very good. Off and running. So this brings us to item number eight on the agenda. This is going to be approval of seven council members, for the most part. And I believe, Mike, did you want to add some flavor to this front end of this before we start?
If I could, I held off in the beginning. I'd like to continue on in some of the, my remarks.
Chair's prerogative, I'll allow it.
No time limit? No, I'm kidding. You know, I had to get up this morning at 4:30 to change water on my irrigation, but I got up at 3:15 because I couldn't sleep because of the task that we five have before us in choosing this first council. I think the first item, number seven, was easy for us to do. I think we would all be in agreement. But this number eight has been a difficult one for me personally, and I would imagine all five of us would say the same thing. So at 3:15 this morning, when I got up and I sat at my couch and tried to think of some things that I might say on this day, floods of things came to me. One of them was, is that, maybe talk a little bit about the process here. We had over 86 applications for the first city council, town council. I'm not for sure what we're going to call it, but it's the council. For the first council, 86 applications showed their interest. There were some good individuals that had applied that didn't make the final cut, but they've been actively involved in their communities, serving already on committees throughout the county, doing various services throughout the county that didn't make the final cut. There's many of them that didn't even apply that have done things behind the scenes for years. I've been a resident of Santan Valley since 2009. It's when I first moved here. I've seen a lot of growth, a lot of things happen. I began farming in 2011, and I've seen this area grow, and that's one of the reasons why I ran, because I saw all the problems and issues that we had with our roads and everything. And I'd be out on the tractor, why in the world don't they punch Gansel all the way through to Hunt Highway and relieve some of the traffic? And that was one of the reasons that motivated me to run. But there was something that I always liked to, and I, sometimes my fellow Board members don't like me to tell stories, but I'm going to in this particular situation. This morning, there was something that, out of those 86 applications, real quick, just let me preface, what happened was, is our clerk distributed between all five of us all 86 applications. All five of us had to weed through all of that. And I don't necessarily mean be weed, but actually go through and methodically pick the top 14 that we felt were the top 14. Through that, our clerk pulled them all together, and I think there was about seven, that there was some kind of a general consensus between the five of us. To make it fair, the Chairman and I sat together on a subcommittee, and we chose an additional seven individuals to be a part of the interview process. One pulled out, and so only 13 were interviewed on Monday. Some of the comments that was made, some of the questions that were asked of these individuals was about what's good governance? What is integrity? Questions integrity, doing the right thing when nobody's looking, doing the right thing for others rather than your own self-interest. Gratitude was expressed, and gratitude for us as Board members for the things, you know, the way we've been trying able to provide services to this large population that has been considered a city for years anyway. One of the comments that an applicant made that I thought, and I'm going to, I told him that I was going to tag this, was that Santan Valley has been put together like Frankenstein. You look at all the patches and everything else and the struggles we have, some of you that have been sitting here, that have been in the area for years, and we're just starting to really build some quality roads and get it up to par to where we can actually get safe transportation, moving people around. As I woke up, this came to me. In 1980, the 1980 Olympics, for those of you that can remember back that far, or even was young enough or old enough to remember that, the U.S. won the gold medal in hockey. The story behind the scenes has always been impressive to me. It's always been an inspiration to me. The coach, Herb Brooks, was a well-known college coach, and he was chosen to coach the team. Moments before the gold medal game, and I quote this all the time to my kids, "The gold medal game against the Russians," he began by saying, as he came into the locker room, "Great moments are born from great opportunities." And that's what we have here tonight, boys. That's what you've earned here tonight. As I think about that, his style of coaching was very unique. I feel that he was chosen because of his beliefs that the Russians could be beaten and USA could become the gold medalists for that season. How he became that individual was he studied the Russian team and how they dominated for 20-plus years. And he even studied the coach and his style. He even had communications with that particular coach. And then when he did something which was when unique, on the day of the tryouts, he circumvented the selection committee and went out on a limb, and he chose the group he felt that would be best suited to win the gold medal. That was his goal, win the gold medal. He felt strongly that he could beat the Russians. He picked 26 hockey players, and he had to whittle it down to only 20 that could be on the roster. Now, I know this isn't the Olympics, and I'm not Herb Brooks. However, and this is, may not be the Olympics, but, or this may not be the gold medal, but actually, is it? I think it is. So, as a result of Santan Valley, I've lived here for 16 years. And for the past eight years, I have had the privilege and honor of representing you, my constituents, as a member of this Board. In less than a year, it will be presented to the citizens as a whole to officially elect their mayor and their other six council members in a year, less than a year. I hope and pray that all individuals will, that have anything to do, your voice is heard through the voting process. That's really where your voice is heard. Turn out, vote for those that you think are good individuals, good men, good women, can serve in these capacities. And I think that's what we're going to try to do here today. Lastly, just remember the words of Herb Brooks. Great moments are born from great opportunities, and that's what we have here today. That's what the residents of Santan Valley have earned here today. And then included by, now go out and take it. So that's what I wish to say.
Chairman? Yes? I don't want to be corny, but I think the area has been very lucky, too, to have Supervisor Goodman for all the time and care you've put into this. I think you were definitely the right person at the right time to help usher this through as well. And everybody thanks everybody else, but nobody ever thanks you. So thank you.
You beat me to the punch there, Supervisor, because he's done a lot for that area and very dedicated to the citizens there.
I just wanted to say, you know, we talk about the 80 Olympics, and I got to tell you something, this is an historical day. It really is. I got to do this a few years ago for the City of Maricopa to pick one city council member. We had 12, 13 applicants. We had 86 to choose from, and I got to tell you something, all 86 would have represented Santan Valley very well. It took a lot of time for all of us to go through these and pick them. So I just want to mention that this is an historical moment. I am proud and honored to be part of this, and this will go down in history. And the five of us get to be part of history, whether we like it or not, and I've heard that before. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
I think Supervisor Miller has said, if you wanted to lose your friends, just go for a political office. And so that may happen today.
I've said this in many speeches, and this is when I first got into politics, when I first got elected. Don't do it for the money or the thanks, because you ain't going to get much of either one. Anyway, we'll go through the process here. I want to, or kind of explain the process to you. We have seven seats to fill. Each seat will be a single nomination and then a vote, and then we'll move to the next seat. And then again, we'll have nominations. You can have, you can have more than one. We can have, I guess you could technically have five nominations on any one seat, but it'll require three votes, three votes to fill the seat. So, any questions on the process?
I want to make, I want to make a statement.
Sure.
I've been through this several times, being on city council and mayor, and as your names come up, if we happen to do it, to vote no on you, that doesn't mean that we individually don't think you'd be, do a good job. It just may be that we're hoping for someone that we do want. We have a list here, and maybe we want our number two, and you're our number seven, so maybe we're hoping for that. So, and there's always resentment later. I remember when he voted against me, and now you're here, but whoever gets on there, we want to work with all of you, and we're not necessarily against you, we may just be hoping for our higher choices, so.
Yeah, and I'll have some instructions at the end of this after the selection process is done as well. So if you're ready, I'll open up the nominations for seat number one.
Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Just for the record...
What did I miss?
The confirmation of the candidates.
Oh, the names.
The names.
No, the confirmation of the candidates, that has been confirmed that they are indeed...
Okay.
They went through the interview process.
All the candidates, all 13 candidates have been, it's all been validated that they are, live within the city limits or what will be the new city limits. They all have passed background checks, and they all are registered voters. Was there another?
And one more. They have all lived within the boundaries within the...
And they've all lived within the boundaries for a minimum of one year.
At least over one year.
Of one year. So that was the basic requirements, so I hope everybody's good with that. But we've confirmed all 13 of these names have met those qualifications. Okay. Okay, nominations are open for seat number one.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to consider Brian Hunt.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to consider Rupert Wolvert.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to consider Darren Schneff.
Any others? Okay, we'll close the nominations on seat number one. All for Brian Hunt. Vote aye.
Chairman, if we can have a motion in a second?
I thought there was no second.
There's no motions.
So we've done, you just closed the nomination.
Can I ask a question?
Okay, let me get the technical part done here. The nomination for these, we have three nominees.
For seat one.
For seat one.
Correct.
Okay. What do you want me to say next?
So now we're looking to make motions for each of the nominations.
Okay. I need a motion for each of the nominations.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely, because I'm confused as well.
Okay. My question is, is maybe they don't take the first seat. Can they be nominated for the second, third, fourth? Okay, that's all I need to know.
And just for further clarification, that is correct. Just for further clarification. So the nomination is closed, so now we have moved to the actual appointment. So now we need a motion for the appointment of, which was the first nomination, Brian
that we individually don't think you'd be, do a good job. It just may be that we're hoping for someone that we do want. We have a list here, and maybe we want our number two, and you're our number seven, so maybe we're hoping for that. So, and there's always resentment later. I remember when he voted against me, and now you're here, but whoever gets on there, we want to work with all of you, and we're not necessarily against you. We may just be hoping for our higher choices, so.
Yeah, and I'll have some instructions at the end of this after the selection process is done as well. So if you're ready, I'll open up the nominations for seat number one.
Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Just for the record.
What did I miss?
The confirmation of the candidates.
Oh, the names.
The names.
No, the confirmation of the candidates that has been confirmed that they are indeed...
Okay.
They went through the interview process.
All the candidates, all 13 candidates have been, it's all been validated that they are, live within the city limits or what will be the new city limits. They all have passed background checks, and they all are registered voters. Was there another?
And one more. They have all lived within the boundaries within the...
And they've all lived within the boundaries for a minimum of one year.
At least over one year.
Of one year. So that was, that was the basic requirements, so I hope everybody's good with that. But we've confirmed all 13 of these names have met those qualifications. Okay. Okay, nominations are open for seat number one.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to consider Brian Hunt.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to consider Rupert Woolver.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to consider Darren Schneff.
Okay, we'll close the nominations on seat number one. All for Brian Hunt. Vote aye.
Chairman, if we can have a motion in a second.
I thought there was no second.
There's no motions.
So we've done, you just closed the nomination.
Can I ask a question?
Okay, let's get, let me get the technical part done here. The nomination for these, we have three nominees.
For seat one.
For seat one.
Correct.
Okay. What do you want me to say next?
So now we're looking to make motions for each of the nominations.
Okay. I need a motion for each of the nominations.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely, because I'm confused as well.
Okay. My question is, is maybe they don't take the first seat. Can they be nominated for the second, third, fourth? Okay, that's all I need to know.
And just for further clarification, that is correct. Just for further clarification, so the nomination is closed, so now we have moved to the actual appointment. So now we need a motion for the appointment of, which was the first nomination, Brian Hunt.
Okay. So I need a motion for Brian Hunt for seat number one.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve Brian Hunt for position one.
And I need a second.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor of Brian Hunt for number one?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I don't, no.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. So, he received three votes?
He's in.
Four votes, I'm sorry. Okay, so there's no more vote.
Correct.
Now we'll move to seat number two. Nominations are open for seat number two.
I would nominate Rupert Woolver.
Rupert, okay. I have a nomination. Do I have any other nominations for seat two?
Mr. Chair, I move we consider Brian Tyler.
Any more nominations for seat number two? Okay, hearing none. We'll close the nominations for seat number two. Do I have a motion for either Rupert or Brian?
I'll make a motion, we nominate Rupert Woolver.
Have a nomination? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second.
Just, just to confirm, Chairman, it's not a nomination, it's the appointment of.
Or the appointment of.
Yep. Change my motion, please. Do I need to re-say it?
Yes.
I move we appoint Rupert Woolver to chair number two.
And I second it.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second on Rupert. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Aye.
Three, two, four. When you said aye, you meant aye for, for the yes. Thank you. Boy, your head's got to be spinning out there. I know. Okay. Okay, let's, we good? I move to chair number three.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we, I would like to nominate Brian Hunt, I mean Brian Tyler.
Brian Tyler?
Second.
No, not yet.
What, I can't follow.
Any more nominations for the, for the third chair? There being none. I close that. I need a motion for Brian Tyler.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve Brian Tyler as third chair.
Do I have a second?
Now I second.
Now I have a second. No other nominations for that seat? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Now we're on number four.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Dan Oakes, Daniel Oakes.
I have a nomination for Dan Oakes. Do I have any other nominations for this seat number four?
Chairman, I'd like to nominate Darren Schneff. If I don't say your name right, I apologize.
Okay. We'll make it work. Any other nominations for seat number four? Close the nominations for seat number four. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move we appoint Darren Schneff to seat number four.
I have a motion to appoint?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and that was on?
Schneff.
Schneff.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. We're on number five.
We're on number five. Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Dan Oakes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Gia Jenkins.
Okay, any other nominations for seat number five? Nomination's closed. Do I have a, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move we consider or appoint Gia Jenkins to seat number five.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Seat number six.
Mr. Chair, I'd nominate Tyler Hutchins.
Any other nominations for seat number six?
Dan Oakes. Mr. Chair, I nominate Dan Oakes. Can we have a discussion?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, there's no more nominations for seat five, or six?
Six.
No more. Okay, so we have two. Tyler, help me out here. Hutchins, and, and Dan Oakes are the two nominations for this seat number six. Okay. Want to do some discussion?
Yeah, I would like to, you know, I've known Dan Oakes for 15 years, 16 years. I've known his kids. He's invested in the area. He's been, he's a businessman. He has, has numerous hours in counseling and giving of his service in our community. He has exemplified, his profession has afforded him to be able to work through difficult situations as a counselor. He's dealt with many multiple situations, saved many marriages. I remember several years ago that he was at, that my wife and I was asked to participate in some date night that he had. One thing he did say that was, we were probably the most perfect imperfect couple that he's ever met, and I don't know what he meant by that, but I, whether that was a compliment or not. But the bottom line is, is I can just see as Dan has given a lot of his time and effort in the community already for 20-plus years. He's heavily invested. He has kids that live here. He has grandkids that live here.
I'll just say, don't panic, there's two spots left.
No, I, but I kind of am.
Okay, any other discussion? So we have, do I have a motion for either Dan Oakes or Tyler Hutchins?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Dan Oakes as number, seat number six.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Three, two. Seat number seven?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate and consider Diane Combs for seat number seven.
Okay, any other nominations for seat number seven?
Nominate Tyler Hutchins.
Okay, and Tyler Hutchins. Any other nominations for seat number seven? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
I would make a motion to put in Tyler Hutchins.
A point.
A point.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, Tyler Hutchins, say aye.
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 Say nay. Eyes have it. We stumbled through that. Okay, thank you all. Alan, can, I think you need to want to give them some preliminary instructions. Now that you've been appointed, there's a process you're going to go through to be, your life will change here pretty quick. But anyway, Mr. Quest, if you can give them some, some guidance here for the beginning.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My plan is to reach out to the new council members. They are now a body, part of the town of Santan Valley. So there are certain laws that will be in effect, including open meeting law, which regulates, you know, prevents a quorum of them gathering to discuss town business. So we will be setting up, reaching out to them to set up dedicated email addresses for town business, and we will be coordinating the first council meeting, which must occur within 20 days from today, so that a mayor can be selected, a vice mayor, and there'll be a whole suite of resolutions and other items for that first council meeting. In addition, I know we're working with the county and setting up ceremonial swearing-in for Thursday, September 25th, and that'll be at the CAC facility, so we're looking forward to that as well.
And I, I believe the time on that, was it seven or six? Six o'clock? So, to go along with, if you're, if it's okay, Supervisor. I, I think it'd be important that we get the message out as quick as possible to the residents so that they can come and be a part of this monumental moment.
Okay, anything else?
No, Chairman.
Thank you, thank you for all your help.
Do we know where they're going to meet? Are they going to meet at your office or at the library?
We've offered our office there. It's available if you need it. And then for the, for the swearing-in, we've made arrangements with CAC College. It's a bigger room, bigger space, so it can hold a lot more people at the CAC College. Is that what you were talking about?
Yeah, there, I know you have that meeting room where you could have council meetings in there.
Correct, correct. And that's still going to have to be discussed where they're going to do it.
Okay. All right. Okay, folks, we're ready. We'll move on to item number nine on the agenda, which is consent items. All items indicated by alphabetically below will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless the board, a board member, county manager, or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Does anybody on the board have anything they want pulled? Anybody from the public have anything you want pulled? B is in boy. P is in all. Thank you.
Yeah.
That's P. Board's pleasure?
What were the, what were the exclusions against? Sorry.
P is the only one.
Just P?
As far as I know, it's P.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve consent items A through P, well, A through P minus P. How's that?
A through O.
So to, you know, like a double negative, right? So like A to O, right? You want that? Okay. So I approve, I move we approve consent items A through O.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. P. Sheriff, people, are you here? Buddy was here. This is your item.
I also asked to pull P just prior to the meeting, and so we could put it on a later date. It's, the Senate bill is a little difficult to put into writing for our finance department because it's $400,000, but it comes in $100,000 increments. And so that's what, it was placed on the agenda so we could get a pay category to pay for a tech van. And I didn't care for the wording of how it got put on the agenda, and also we want to work through because it's, we're only getting $100,000 now that we're paying for a tech van for. And then we have not even yet figured out what we're going to spend the other $300,000 on, but we want to spend it on the best needs of the county.
Do you want it tabled, continued, or withdrawn?
The request is to withdraw.
Withdraw. Okay. So I have a motion to withdraw P.
Check.
We have more discussion?
Mr. Roberto, did he have any questions on?
Did you have any questions?
No, I agree with pulling it for later discussion.
Very good.
So, Ms.
Do you have a question?
So is there still a need for the armored vehicle?
It shouldn't have said armored vehicle, it should have said tech van. It's, it's a van for delivering technology safely to the vehicle. An armored vehicle would be $400,000, and that's why I didn't care for the wording on this item. The, the tech vans, we're still getting quotes on it, but it's around $100,000 for van. It has light armor so that, like our drone operators could be inside it at the scene of a swap scene like just occurred in Eloy, when we had to send drone in to do a security sweep. We want to make sure they're safe also. There's only so much room in a Bearcat, so that's what the tech van is. There is a need for it, Supervisor.
Which we already have, don't we?
We already have a Bearcat.
Okay, so, okay, I was making sure we didn't, we weren't unprotected.
Oh, sir.
Yeah. And, and they can be defensive and helpful, too. They're not always offensive weapons, too, when you do have a Bearcat.
That's exactly right, sir.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Because it's on the agenda, we need a motion to withdraw. Yes. So do I have a motion to withdraw?
Mr. Chair, I move we withdraw item P as recommended.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. Okay. Supervisors meeting to convene into... Yeah, I, yes, okay. I was like, what's this say? Okay, I want to recess the Board of Supervisors meeting, and we're going to open up the Penale County Flood Control District Board of Directors meeting, which I believe is all consent. All, all items indicated by alphabetically below will be handled as a single vote as a consent agenda unless the board member of the county manager or a member of the public objects at the time. So we have A and B on the Penale County Flood Control District. Anybody want anything pulled?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the Flood Control District as written, A and B.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Flood Control District meeting is adjourned, and we'll go into, I believe it's the library. I call the Penale County Board, Penale County Library District Board meeting to order. All items are consent, so all items indicated alphabetically below will be handled as a single vote as a part of the consent agenda unless the board member, county manager, or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Anybody want anything pulled off of the library? And I have a woman waving her hand at me. D, will you come forward? And I did, I did receive your email, and I did forward it, so.
Okay. Okay. Chairman Miller, Board, I sent an email to Chair Miller, and I sent you all a copy. I am very interested in the library in general, and I don't know that I want you not to approve these things. I just want you to know, I would like to be on the library board of Penale County. That's all I have to say.
That's not really agendized right now, but we'll keep that all in mind, and, and I did forward your emails to, to the proper people, and we'll get some response to you.
Okay, actually, in the minutes, I think you appointed. I think if I'd read the minutes, appointment of the new librarian would have been in the minutes. That's the connection.
Okay.
Okay? I did connect it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, D. Okay, did I have, did anybody make a motion on the library?
No, there was no motion yet, but Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Penale County Library District consent items A through B.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. Okay, Public Health. I close the library district, and I open up the Penale County Health Services District. So all items indicated alphabetically below will be handled as a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless the board member, county manager, or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Anybody want? Anybody want anything pulled? Seeing done. Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the Public Health Services District Board of Directors' agenda items, consent items A through B.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. O say nay. Ayes have it. So I closed the Public Health. And we're going to reconvene the Board of Supervisors meeting. E session, I believe.
While you're doing that, Mr. Chair, I move that we recess the Board of Supervisors' General Meeting and convene E Session, Executive Session.
I have a motion to go into Exec Session.
Can, I'm sorry Chairman.
What?
Can we just confirm which items that we're going into the executive session on? Because we do have a couple of executive sessions. So we have items 21, 24, and 25.
I believe this one would be for item 21.
21, okay.
Is this timely? Do we have people waiting? Can we get public comment out of the way?
We have attorneys waiting.
Okay, I did, all right. Understood then.
We have a motion, do we need a second?
Motion. Oh, motion is...
Second.
Details, you know.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. O say nay. Ayes have it. So we're going back into that item. I'm on item number 22. So discussion approval or disapproval of limited waivers of attorney-client privilege concerning advice from outside counsel regarding the Board of Supervisors' role, authority, and appointment of the county attorney deputy. Where's our attorney?
Right there.
Brett?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the limited waiver of attorney-client privilege.
Okay, I have...
Concerning this item.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O say nay. Ayes have it. Brett, do you want to present on this limited?
Your Honor, I think I'm in the courtroom again. Mr. Chairman, I think we're gonna be moving to item 23 then since 22 is finished, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
So in regard to item 23, thank you again, Mr. Chairman, for the invitation to come down. My name is Brett Johnson from the Law Firm of Stellwiler. I was appointed as outside counsel for the Board as to a limited matter dealing with an outside counsel opinion that was provided to the Penale County Attorney in relation to the responsibilities and roles between the Penale County Attorney as well as the Board in the consent and selection of a civil deputy. So the opinion letter that the county attorney received from the outside counsel dealt specifically with the Board's power to consent to the appointment of deputies under ARS 11-409. The outside counsel concluded that the Board's power to consent to the appointments was only ministerial and that that Board essentially must consent unless there is something arbitrary, capricious, or unreasonable about that appointment. However, based on the history and text of this statute as well as the applicable and clear case law on point, we respectfully disagree with the outside counsel's opinion. The Board does not give assent, if the Board does not give assent, the appointment does not take effect. In regard to ARS 11-409, it is clear that the county officer is making an appointment of deputies, but that is also by and with the consent of and the salaries fixed by this Board. Arizona statutes have regulated this process by which county officials actually appoint their deputies since before Arizona was a territory. After using a system that generally gave county officers free rein to appoint deputies, in 1917, the legislature departed from that system and enacted a statute stating that county officers could only appoint deputies by and with the consent of and at salaries affixed by the Board of Supervisors. The statutory amendment tells us that the legislature generally wanted more involvement by the Board of Supervisors, not less. This provision has remained on the books since 1970, 1917, with only stylistic changes to its wording. There are several case law that the outside counsel for the county attorney did not consider. Arizona actually relies on very early cases, two of them called Worsley, that hold that the amount of salary paid to a deputy appointment as well as the Board's consent to that appointment were matters within the Board's discretion. They were not ministerial in nature. The same principle was applied to the Governor's approval of the employees to the Industrial Commission in a case called Price, which specifically rejected that the Governor only had a ministerial role. Again, these on-point cases were not considered by the outside counsel. Other jurisdictions have interpreted similar statutes to agree that the power to consent or approve envisions a substantive role, not a ministerial one. Arizona courts have often analogized this power to the role of the Senate for presidential appointments. The United States Supreme Court's case law is clear that the Senate's role is substantive and includes the power to reject a proposed appointee. In regard to other areas of the outside counsel's opinion, it relies almost exclusively on case law involving members of the judiciary who are not subject to ARS 11-409's framework. Those cases simply do not address the context of the issue presented. The pragmatic concerns identified by the outside counsel also hold little weight. Ironically, they were the exact same arguments that were rejected decades ago in the Price case. The practical concerns do not overcome the statute's plain meaning. And the objection that the Board might somehow dominate the staffing decisions of other county officials makes little practical sense. The Board exercises fiscal supervision over other county officers, including approval of budgets, salaries, and setting qualifications for employment. The substantive approval of deputies is consistent with and part of the Board's fiscal supervision authority. In addition, the separation of powers concerns that were raised by the outside counsel do not apply between county officers who are ultimately responsible to voters. Again, the Board exercises fiscal supervisory authority. Arbitrarily limiting that authority by holding the Board to some ministerial role would undermine that key function and make the statute meaningless. The county attorney is also responsible for giving legal advice to this Board. Thus, the Board has a direct and substantial interest in the appointment process of a person who will provide and oversee advice and counsel to this Board. In regard to the minimum qualifications that other counties have done, there's 15 counties and each county is in its own prerogative to develop the qualifications for its deputies. Those qualifications are set by the Boards and then implemented by the county administrators. Those previously established minimum qualifications are how the county human resources know which candidates the Board will not consent to. It would be irrational to require all appointments of different departments that come before the Board. So the Board was well within its rights and it's a standard and essential practice due to the sheer number of county employees at issue. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I respectfully disagree with the outside counsel from the Penale County Attorney's Office. The role is not ministerial in any way and the Board needs to be able to consent to the appointment. Any questions?
Any questions for Counselor?
No, I believe that was very clear.
Precise. For me, that was good.
Okay. So we're on item number 24 now? Yeah, go ahead. Somebody say something? Oh. Item number 24 is Executive Session, so we'll reconvene. We did not close it, so we'll reconvene in Exec Session right now.
Chairman, just to confirm, is that only 24 or are we gonna go in for 24 and 25?
24, 25.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Order.
A second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Brings us to item, item number 26 on the agenda, which is a discussion approval or disapproval of Penale County Attorney's September 3rd request to waive minimum qualifications of therefore potential reconsideration of the Board of Supervisors' lack of consent for the county attorney's appointment to the position of County Attorney Deputy Chief. You've all had an opportunity to review that document, I believe? So what's the Board's pleasure on this time? And any discussion or comments?
Well, I would just like to say, Chair, before we vote on this, you know, it's important to first, you know, clearly say that despite what's been reported to the public, this position has nothing to do with crime or criminal prosecutions. This position serves as a chief legal advisor for the county and we, the Board, are its primary client. As chief legal advisor, this position requires considerable expertise in the areas of contracts, public records, employment law, transportation, taxes, public works, environmental law and regulations, zoning, procurement, land use, elections, open meeting law, and more. In other words, every law except those covered in criminal family law. And to waive qualifications for this critical role, such as someone with barely two years' experience in only a few of these roles in civil law would create unacceptable risk for the Board and other elected officials who are clients as well and for our residents in the county. Just want that out there.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, or thoughts? What's the Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I move that we disapprove the request to waive the minimum qualifications.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Brings us to call to the public. Item number 13. Call to public is a period for the members of the public to address the Board of Supervisors to provide public input relating to subject matter within the Board of Supervisors' authority and/or jurisdiction. Those wishing to address the Board of Supervisors need not request permission in advance. Actions taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or reschedule it for further consideration and discussion at a later date. So I do have a few cards here. And I will just take them in order, looks like we have four. Barry McCain. Barry McCain.
Good afternoon, Chairman Miller and Penale County Board of Supervisors. I'm Barry McCain after 20 years United States Navy. There's a lot of things that I want to say right off Supervisor's thirty. Thank you for reminding us. Everything I did was to keep people alive. I'd like to thank Supervisor Goodman. Now we have somebody who can take care of Santan. And I'm never gonna stop Supervisor McClure. I'm so thankful for you. I wish I had your temperament, but we're training two world heavyweight boxing champions. I was right Saturday and my fighter was wrong. Still love him, still respect him, but I'm the best. Anyway, we got a lot of things we can do coming up this next session. And I'm gonna need everybody's help on this. I got 150 bills to work the capital. And, but first, I need you to do me a favor. Because of all the disinformation I've been seeing in Maricopa for years, I'm asking this Board of Supervisors to have a forensic audit of Maricopa City Council because it was just wrong, the things that they were doing and putting out. We've got so many things we can do, we can't have this distraction. And the other thing I need to do is because Mal Phizzas is a perfect reason to throw someone out of office. What happened on February 5th never have happened, but then I need you guys to have Mr. Fattel leave because the man has no business sitting here with flacculants. That's all I get out of it, you know? We've got too many things we can do and I'm tired of being harassed by people who are so incompetent. There's so many things we need to do and thank you so much for Santan, it really means a lot to me. That's the only thing I want to say, bye.
Terrence Chin, is it C-H-I-N-N? Is that correct?
Good morning, Chairman Miller and members of the Board. My name is Tierney Chan and I am speaking on behalf of all voting as local. I am here because thousands of voters have been caught up in a state error through no fault of their own. An MVD record-keeping mistake has placed their voting rights in question. These are longtime Arizona residents, people who have been voting for years, if not decades, and now they are facing the real possibility of being downgraded to federal-only voters or even having their registrations suspended completely. How is that fair? The Arizona Attorney General has issued a clear opinion. County Recorders cannot legally suspend a voter's registration or change their status to federal-only unless there is confirmation that the person is not a U.S. citizen. The Secretary of State has also echoed the guidance of the Attorney General and asked counties to follow it. Yet, in both Penale and Maricopa Counties, policies remain in place that do not align with Attorney General and Secretary of State's guidance, creating confusion and disparity across Arizona, meaning voters in one county are treated differently than voters in another. This is not how democracy works. We should not punish eligible voters, many of whom have been registered to vote in Arizona for decades, for an error made by the state. Restricting the rights of these voters will harm our neighbors, waste taxpayer dollars on litigation, and weaken trust in the fairness of our democratic process. We should ensure that every eligible voter has the same opportunity to fully participate in their elections by fully aligning with the Attorney General's opinion. I am urging the county recorder to send a clear message that this county values consistency, fairness, and equal treatment under the law. Arizonans deserve a system that works equally for everyone, no matter which county they reside. Thank you.
Dee? Help me with your last name, Dee. What is it? Podasky. Podasky, okay.
It's debatable.
Okay.
Okay. I am Dia Podasky and I live in unincorporated Penale County, home of the action, Hilo River, Tohodah Autumn. People, I live at the base of the Superstition Mountains, which are sacred to the Apache and Pippa people. And today, I'm gonna talk about proclamations, one of the favorite things you all do. Orange Shirt Day occurs annually on September 30th and is observed in the United States to honor Native American and Alaskan Native people affected by the history of U.S. Indian boarding school system. It started in Canada and the reason, it raises awareness about the trauma and forced assimilation of indigenous people. I grew up in Iowa, so my experience was in Tama, the town I grew up. There was a building, which at that time was apartment buildings, but it had been a boarding school. And I'm afraid that the trauma in Indian boarding schools is gonna go the way of slavery. And it's gonna, people are gonna say, oh, it makes people feel uncomfortable, let's just take it out of the Smithsonian. Okay, that's my thing. Now, I don't know that you can do anything about this because you're not gonna meet Now, I don't know that you can do anything about this because you're not going to meet again, so you can't possibly get a proclamation, but maybe you could have your staff, direct your staff to put something up on the county, you know, communication system. However, you can do something about this one. September 15th to October 15th is National Hispanic American Heritage Month. You could have a proclamation about this. The percentage of the population in Penile County who identifies as Hispanic or Latino is around 31%. 31% of the people in this county identify themselves in that way. It seems like that would be more than you make proclamations about all the time. That's all I have to say. It's not even blinking at me. And thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon Supervisors. I'm Beverly Goldstein, Queen Creek in District 2, and I chair District 2 for the PCRC and I'm here in that position. Supervisor Miller, Vice Chair McClure, my supervisor Michael Goodman, and Supervisor, thank you for allowing me to speak to you today. I am addressing item, item L on the consent agenda related to re-presenting. I participated with my team of people very heavily and I wanted to give a public statement on that experience. The process was extremely well organized. It was on schedule. It was very inclusive and we had an extremely good experience working specifically with Garrett Glover, James Hyman, and Recorder Lewis. So I wanted to share that with you. District 2 was most affected by the re-presenting compared to the five, the four other districts. And we put together a committee and submitted a written report that addressed precinct numbers, precinct names, and boundaries. And 100% of what we submitted was accepted. We appreciated that very much because we took this activity, which was on the behalf of the county, very seriously as to how it was going to affect us as voters in our precincts. So we thought that should be highlighted, that we were acknowledged and included. I have three recommendations for moving forward. I understood from Recorder Lewis that we will remain in our voting locations regardless of how the precincting moves. And I am suggesting that within the new precincts, there will be two ballot judges, one from each party for each precinct. We will have a huge number of new ballot styles and I think it warrants having the right number of ballot judges. The second suggestion is, I know we're going to use 2026 to figure out voting locations for 2028. I would like to see published criteria on what we're looking for before the primary and general election next year, so we aren't just saying, oh, we had too many people here and not enough people there. I think we should know what we're looking for. And my third suggestion is, I think we should publish, even if it's just in a newsletter that comes out weekly or whatever, how we are going to go about notifying all voters in the county of their new precinct number and name. Thank you.
Thank you Beverly. Thank you. That's all the cards I have. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak today?
Thank you. Again, fellow Americanos, happy 238th Constitution Day. Oi, today. Mr. Chairman, this past week's violence has brought into sharp focus the need to confront death by firearms and the challenge to free speech. Tragically, Charlie Clark Kirk, most recent victim of political violence, accepted that some gun deaths are a price to pay in protection of the Second Amendment and the First Amendment's free speech. I happen to disagree with his view that the way to reduce gun violence is to put more guns into the hands of more Americans, a contradictory view that might please makers and marketers of firearms, but at an alarming cost to America's children, children between the age of one and 17, whose single largest cause of death is gun violence. Nonetheless, I strongly do agree with Mr. Kirk's taking these issues into the public arena for open and candid dialogue. Here in this marketplace of ideas, I've tried to engage with political adversaries and county office holders, but thus far have been met with silence. I've challenged two previous county sheriffs, Paul Babu, Mark Lamb, and today's Sheriff Teepel. I've invited leaders of the County Republican Party and I've asked members of this Board to engage in public discussion in an effort at bridging divisiveness, to identify issues that are destroying our constitutional democratic republic. Admittedly, the context of these challenges has been difficult. Why castigate presence of undocumented male immigrants while engaging romantic dalliances, relationships with them? Why criticize drug smuggling while a family member is an abuser of imported drugs? Why condemn outrage of residents who oppose law enforcement sweeping neighbors off streets and disappearing them into unidentified detention centers? Why endorse promoting a sex predator and a convicted criminal to the highest office of the land when that candidate cannot qualify for a county entry-level job? Thus far, none of those challenges have had the Charlie Kirk commitment to engage in open dialogue. Let's take a page from Mr. Kirk's commitment. Let's dedicate ourselves to nonviolence and truly support a nation's foundational belief in uncomfortable free speech. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. Any other people? Okay. Public comment's over. We have, okay. For all you planners out there, we're gonna take lunch.
Mr. Chair.
Sorry.
My name was called out and I'd like to just say a brief two seconds.
Oh, okay. Okay. I missed that.
Yes, so my name was used. Mr. McCain, you are always welcome to my office to discuss everything and anything over the past nine years that I've been in office, sorry, seven years in office. And you're more than welcome to come in anytime you want. You know where my office is and we'll, happy to sit down with you. And I'd like to sit, listen, and learn to all these comments that you'd like to make about me. Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna recess for 30 minutes. Sorry, gang. 30 minutes. I couldn't wrangle you guys up. Of a program. Right?
Yeah, yeah.
Year 24, 2024 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. I think Heather Patel's gonna present.
Yes, sir. Thank you Chairman, members of the Board. Every year, we are required to complete a consolidated annual performance and evaluation report on the use of our HUD program funds, which would include the CDBG, the HOME, and the Emergency Solutions Grant programs. And we are required to have a public hearing and post the plan on our website so that people can review it and comment on it. This is over our program year 2024, which is from July 1 of '24 to June 30 of '25. Over that timeframe, we did spend a little over $2 million on the projects that were approved within our annual action plans. The projects that we completed during this last year included a new playground over at the Housing Authority. It included making ADA compliant infrastructure improvements to the Florence Senior Center and Florence Heritage Park. It also included some ADA compliant sidewalks and crosswalk at, on Frontier in Eloy, one of their main stretches. And then we also renovated 10 owner-occupied homes and we also provided services to Rapid Rehousing Services, which is paying rent for persons who are experiencing homelessness. This is a list of projects that are underway that kind of crossed the program years, so although we incurred some expenses last year, we can't really put them in our report as having been completed. But I do want it to be known that we are working on several other projects. Against Abuse, HOHP, and A New Leaf are projects that were funded under our HOME ARP funding, which is several years old. Those are ongoing supportive services programs and they should be finishing up this next year. And then we also worked with Habitat for Humanity to construct, one home was completed, three more are underway, and those are all over in Arizona City. And then, of course, our owner-occupied housing rehab program is an ongoing program, so we're always doing homes. Right now, we're currently in the process of designing some flood control projects over in Valley of the Sun Flood Control District. And we are also designing the renovation of the San Manuel Community Center. We, the city of Eloy is doing some construction to their Toltec Senior Center. And then we provided funding to Horizon Health and Wellness under the HOME ARP program to do some rental units. So right now, they're renovating some units that were purchased and those two will be finished up with in this next year. And that is all I have, really quick presentation, but I welcome any questions.
Any questions?
Yes Heather, thank you. I just wanted to ask, so obviously if you can renovate apartments, you're actually able to do housing also, I'm assuming windows, doors? Because I'm not 100% familiar with the program, so maybe you could just elaborate just a little bit on that?
Okay, thank you. Chairman Miller, Supervisor Vitello, and the rest of the supervisors. The, we, we don't renovate apartment complexes. With Horizon Health and Wellness, they purchased, it was a duplex. So then we're renovating that and it is specific for working with the population in which they serve, which meets the criteria of the HOME ARP program. But then our owner-occupied housing rehab program is where we do make renovations to homes that people have owned and lived in for at least a year. And we do things such as air conditioning, roofing, electrical, plumbing, the things that people are struggling to be able to do to their homes. That program does require that people who receive assistance go through the application process and demonstrate their financial inability to do the work.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? All right, this has a public hearing component to it, so I'm gonna open the public hearing at this time. Just go ahead, come on forward. All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Everybody had their chance. Board's pleasure on this one? Need a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item 14 as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 15. Mr. Watermaker. Proven, uh, let's see, it's a decision to approve or disapprove an ordinance of 0917 25-AD 25-002.
I didn't come up with that number, but, good afternoon Chairman, members of the Board. Chris Watermaker, county engineer, here to present our micro trenching standards. So hopefully this will be a quick presentation. So I just wanted to touch on the timeline and the process we went through to get here. We initiated this process back in May of this year with a stakeholder meeting where we invited a number of companies and key individuals from industry who work on installing fiber optic cables, whether they're providers of the infrastructure or providers of the service that is using that infrastructure, to get their input on micro trenching. Then we had a work session in June, got your input from this Board, and we made some changes to the standards. And then we had another stakeholder meeting, again, well attended. We heard their comments and their concerns and we subsequently made it, made some additional changes to those standards. We published those standards on August 6th and then we published the notice of hearing for today's meeting on August 12th. So to date, we have not received any additional formal comments on those standards. So what you see today in this presentation and, and referenced in the ordinance is what is, what was published on August 6th. So talk a little bit about the feedback we've received through this process from the industry. And generally, the request focused around, they wanted shallower depths so they could install the, the conduits at, at a faster rate and at a lower cost. So we did make some changes, again, to accommodate that. Another request that we received from, from industry was to place the micro trench adjacent to the curb rather than away from the curb. If you remember, the draft standards that we had a couple months ago showed a preference to have the micro trench away from the curb. So we did add an option that places it at the curb at the request of the, the industry. And then there was also concerns about the T-top patch method, which was what we were at the time presenting as our preferred option. And mostly that was around costs. And I don't have numbers on costs, but, but from what people told me, it was going to be quite a bit more expensive than your traditional trench and bore methods is what I was told. And again, oh, and then we also did add a new alternative, which is a slurry seal option. So, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later, but essentially that eliminates the need for a T-top. It addresses the drainage and infiltration and structural concerns that we would have with our roads with, with biallowingness, so.
So, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, just to ask you a question. So we went away from the T-top and we're allowing it next to the curb and just filling it with the, the goop is all I can come up with, but anyway, the filler, right?
Chairman Miller, Supervisor McClure, so the, the T-top is still an option if someone wants to use it, but we are now allowing an alternate option which places the trench against the curb. And instead of using the crack seal or the mastic sealer, they would just seal the entire road with a slurry seal.
Okay, okay, that's where we, okay.
So.
Slurry, yeah, okay. Goop, yes, thank you.
So on this slide, I have a table that compares micro trenching versus other methods of installing fiber optic cables within pavement section. And this is modified from a, from the last presentation you might have seen at the work, the work session. But essentially what I wanted to highlight here is the relative costs of micro trenching versus other methodologies. And so micro trenching, as you can see here, ranges between $5 and $10 per linear foot. And when you add the slurry seal, that does increase the cost at an estimated $8 to $15 per linear foot, which is still significantly less expensive than a directional bore or a conventional trenching method. Now, I will caveat this by saying that these numbers are based on just my research of trying to kind of find industry averages. I wasn't able to get exact costs from any specific provider. They weren't willing to disclose that, which is, which is fine, but this, this seems to be representative of Arizona. There we go. So back to the proposed standards, so we're talking about one micro trench, or micro trenching would- trenching would be allowed on each side of the road, and we, with the intent of minimizing perpendicular crossings. We did change the maximum width of that trench to three inches. It was previously four inches. The minimum, maximum depths, we did change that. So now, the minimum depth of cut is 10 inches, where I think previously, we had it at 12 inches. So again, that was a change requested by the industry. And that would put the top of the conduit no shallower than nine inches deep, which is fairly shallow, but being adjacent to the curb and with the slurry seal, it should be, should be fine. Black backfill with what we call a slurry material, it's a low strength cementitious material, and then a tracer wire to help identify that as being under the pavement. So back to the question that was brought up earlier, so we have the two options, the T-top method, which we did reduce the T-top from a 24-inch width to a 12-inch width, basically cutting that asphalt in half, or the slurry seal option. So, and neither of these methods require the mastic epoxy or, or crack seal, if you will, on the road. So either of these approved methods would leave the road in a pretty good condition once it's done. So. And some other things of note, with the use of micro trenching, we will be requiring the contractor or the applicant to do advanced public notification through a variety of methods, and we want to make sure that the, the neighborhoods where this work is going to be taking place, that the residents are well informed of what's going to happen. Another thing is, we want to make sure all other alternatives are considered before we move into a micro trenching option, because there may be situations where a, a fiber optic cable could be installed in the public utility easement via traditional methods with little to no impact to the public. And so, we would rather have that than tearing up the pavement. So that's going to be looked at. Another provision with these standards is that we will need to amend or revise the existing license agreements that we have with providers, because there's additional language that we want to include in those agreements to ensure that our pavements and our roads are protected. And so, we already have the draft, or the language for that, and are working with some providers to get ready for this. And also, another consideration is looking at the actual roadway conditions when a applicant comes in. And so, if the road's already in very poor condition, or if it's not suitable for micro trenching, we'll simply just not allow it. So that's really the end of my presentation. I do have, more for the record, I guess, five slides showing what those actual standards are. And again, they're, they're an exhibit to the ordinance as well. So are there any other questions?
I have just a couple of quick questions. When you were talking about the permitting, is that, is that tied to like our, oh, impact, not the impact fees, but our franchise fees and that type of thing? Because, I mean, we have agreements with folks where the permitting process is a little bit simpler, and they can get through and get to it a little quicker.
Chairman Miller, yes, so as part of the license agreement, that does outline some provisions in the permitting process that could streamline some things. And what we'll do also is, we'll be working with each applicant as they come in with their project, and look at kind of the big picture and say, you know, where are you wanting to provide fiber internet to, to residents? And how can we accommodate what you're trying to do in the best way possible? So we might say, let's permit this entire neighborhood as one permit.
Sure.
And that way, it's, it's done logically, it's done with the same contractor, the same inspector. So that'll be part of the, the process. But, but yes, to your question, the license agreements do address kind of the permitting, some of the permitting side.
Great, great. And then, well, to the scenario where the road is so bad, we're not going to let them put it in, could we, maybe we can work something out to put it in and then recondition the road?
Yeah, there's always opportunity to find a way to make a deal or get something to work like that, yeah. That's definitely going to be part of the discussion, so.
Okay, all right. Anybody have any questions?
Just wanted to ask, warranty wise, one year, when they, they start caving in, is it one year, two years?
Chairman Miller, Supervisor Vitello, I believe it's two-year warranty, and that's in these agreements.
Sure, go ahead, ask a question.
On the warranty, then, who does the warranty work?
So under the agreement, we would, we would call the original applicant back out, and they'd have to bring their contractor out to address any outline, outstanding issues.
Because you might have a fiber company, but they contract, they could have several different companies that put the conduit in for them.
That's right, and it's, it's with the, the.
Actual person that did the work.
Person that's, yeah.
I'm going to open this public comment period right now, so I'm opening it. And I do have a card from Will Novak, would like to speak to this in the public comment period.
Thank you, Chairman, Board of Supervisors. Will Novak with Google Fiber, also known as G-Fiber. Our office is at 1130 North Almas School in Mesa. I just wanted to come and speak in support of this item. We've met with Supervisor Goodman's office quite a few times on this. We're really excited to be hopefully expanding soon to Pinal County. To the warranty question, you know, you didn't ask it to me, but we have found that usually, if it's going to fail, it's going to fail earlier than later. So that's, that's kind of a good thing. We haven't had it where it's failing 10 years down the road. It's going to fail, it's going to fail soon. But I just really wanted to mostly make a comment to really praise Mr. Watermaker and his team. They have been excellent. I have dealt with groups, engineering groups in multiple states. He is by far the most communicative, he's on top of it, moving at the speed of business. When we started this, the diversity of opinions, people were borderline yelling at each other on Zoom calls. You know, what he wanted was different than what we would have wanted. Nobody got exactly what they wanted, but he, in a very professional manner, led it so that we all came to a reasonable compromise. No one internet service provider is going to be able to build out all of Pinal County. It's physically huge, it's diverse, it's rural, it's urban, it's everything in between. So, you know, there's areas that will build, there's areas that others will build, but we're really excited. And then, you know, we've got, the legal team from the county is already looking at the license agreement, and we're talking through some of those things. So we're hoping to get a license agreement approved and maybe get something announced before the end of the calendar year. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak to this item? Seeing them, I'll close the public hearing. I, I do have one more question for you, Chris. Just real quick, how similar are these, these ordinances, these, these requirements to other covenant agencies that have, they're adopting, and I'm sure, all over the state at this time? You know, they're pretty similar?
Chairman Miller, that's a great question. It's, it's, in, in some ways, it's very similar with the depth of the micro trench, the width, the location. The primary difference between what we're proposing here and what pretty much everyone else is doing is the slurry seal. See, a lot of, if you look at the city of Mesa standard, which is a very common one that a lot of municipalities have just adopted, just to, you know, make it a simple and easy, quick process, that standard requires this, the mastic sealer or the crack seal type thing. And we decided to go a little bit a different direction with the slurry seal, because we, we believe that's a better way to deal with all the issues that may come from having this, this, basically a crack or a cut in the pavement. And so, it is a higher standard, but it's a lot lower than the T-top method, which, if you remember, the T-top is something that other agencies do use. ADOT specifically has used it a lot of times. So I feel like this is a good middle ground.
Good, okay, good. That sounds good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 15 as presented.
Second. Motion, do I, and I have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close say nay. Ayes have it, thank you. Moves this to 16, which does have a public hearing component as well. This is a resolution for, resolution number 2025PZPA016-24. And I think we got Glenn standing up here.
Are we hearing 16 to 18 together, because they're all the same?
Oh, okay, they're all tied together. 16 through 18? Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Board members. So this North Copper Basin consists of three cases, PZPA016-24, PZ030-24, and lastly, PZPD018-24. So this is, the first request is for a non-major comprehensive plan amendment to amend the land use plan and redesignate from suburban neighborhood to a special district. The overall totality of the site is about 389 acres. This is southeast of East Hunt Highway and North Gansel. So the owner is the Arizona State Land Department. RVA Planning and Landscape is the applicant. So the second proposal, PZO30-24, is rezoning of approximately 256.1 acres from general rural zoning district to R7 single residence zoning district. Second portion is 68.1 acres from general rural to multiple residence zoning district. And lastly, 64.8 acres from general rural to C3 commercial. So the last component here is the PZPD case, and this is to apply a PAD overlay to allow deviations to development standards for R7, MR, and C3 zoning districts. So that would comprise the totality of the, of the site here, the whole 389 acres. Before I forget, there might be a couple slight discrepancies with some of those acreages there, it was presented to us very late in the game, that there was some scrivviness there, it was found with the legal description, but those are all corrected in the, the resolution and related ordinances. So that, there wasn't enough time to update the, the slides, in other words. So this shows you the overall, general location here. This shows you the, the case map with the surrounding zoning, and, and you have a subdivision here to the south, as you can see. And this is the aerial here, it looks like it's been fallow for, for a little bit. And this is the overall Santan area plan update map. So this is the, shows the proposed land use concept. And so, you see there that yellow area, that's the, otherwise known as Area A. So then, that's envisioned to be the R7 district with the pad overlay. And then, in, in the middle, in the orange, you have the MR. And then, lastly, to the west, you have the, the proposed commercial. So this is looking from the site, basically, to the north, to the south, east, and to the west. So here's the items of consideration. So if this is to be approved, a development plan and formal site plan will be required to establish the specifics of this going forward. Now, the PAD overlay provides allowance for a good deal of flexibility for areas B and C, and this is due to the fact that this, the intention is for the State Land Department to take this to, to auction, and not knowing at present, you know, who the end users may be. And one item of opposition was received at the time the report was written. So Planning and planning commission voted 7-0 to recommend approval on all three cases, and this outlines the number of stipulations for each. And staff would be happy to entertain any questions the board may have.
Any questions?
I think mine will be for the applicant, so.
Okay. The applicant here to present as well?
Well, good afternoon, Chairman Miller and supervisors. My name is Alex Stedman. I'm with RVA Planning and Landscape Architecture, here on behalf of D.R. Horton and Pulte Homes. But also, sitting with me back there are representatives from the State Land Department. This is a piece of, of state land. This has been a historic day for Pinal County. It's been really exciting to, to witness the incorporation. It's a big agenda today, and so I thought, in the interest of brevity, you know, I, I do have a full presentation, but I was thinking, we, Glenn did a really good job of kind of running through the request. I'd be happy to kind of flush out any specifics, but I may just touch on a couple of quick points as we, as we work through this. So this is a hearing for a rezoning application and a non-major general plan amendment. And it's really an opportunity to provide new opportunities for, for home builders, much needed homes in this, in this part of, of Pinal County. But almost more importantly, it's an economic development opportunity as well. So a portion of our site will be provided for commercial uses and office uses. If we could maybe skip ahead to slide 10 or so, I think it's the conceptual.
You have the clicker.
Oh, I do, okay. I can do it then. Okay. So this is our conceptual land use plan. What we've done is really broken it into three distinct areas. There's the light yellow area, which is all completely single-family residential. It's very much in context with the, the type of development and the density of development found around us in the existing Copper Basin neighborhood. Then as we shift towards the northwest, we have Area B, and that allows for a little bit more density and different product types in there, attached, single-family and attached, sorry, detached, multifamily in there. And, and we do have a overall density restriction in there of 12 homes to the acre. And then Area C is the parcel adjacent to Hunt Highway at the Gansel intersection. That's where we have a minimum requirement for commercial and office uses in there, although some residential would be allowed. So it's, we envision Area C as kind of a mixed-use area, and it really complements what the balance of the property is providing in terms of rooftops. The project's also going to provide a lot of benefits to the larger community. Improvements will be made to Hunt Highway, also to Gansel and to Judd. There'll be connectivity that'll be improved from Copper Basin through the project up to Judd. There is existing tourmaline alignment that runs through. We'll be expanding that and giving more intersections there, so it, it should alleviate any, any traffic issues there associated with this project. Reflecting back on our, our hearings, we did receive a unanimous approval at the P&Z a couple months ago. We've had no speakers in opposition, but as Mr. Beck just alluded to, we did receive a letter about some wildlife that's on the site, and we intend to fully comply and, and address that when we get to the development phase on this. And then really, you know, as I, I mentioned just a second ago, we believe this is a project that's compatible with the area and will be a good addition to, to this area in terms of providing services as well as residential. So that was pretty quick, but I'd be happy to answer any specific questions that the supervisors may have. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I do. So for Area C, I mean, I'm all for, I would Supervisor Goodman, I'm sure, agree that, you know, commercial is a great use for that space. I'm a little reticent about the, or a little concerned about the, the mixed-use aspect of it. In your opinion, and not to hold you to it, what, what would something like mixed-use there look like?
Yeah, a mixed-use is, is not an, this, we don't envision an integrated mixed-use where you have residential on top of commercial or things like that. That's, that's more apt for urban areas with more intensity and height. This is, this is a commercial shopping center, potentially some office uses in here. But the mixed-use comes in, at least in my mind, of there's connectivity between those uses, so between the residential and to the commercial. It's walkable, it's similar in scale. You don't have to get in your car if you live in one portion to drive to the other. And so, that's really what we envision on this 60, 60, I think it's 68 acres.
Yeah, 60, 64.8, whatever. But so, so you're saying not living in that space, but commercial with access to the residential areas via, you know, sidewalk, something, cart path, whatever.
You can take your moped there if you want.
No, that's you, because that's your district.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Well, it's my district, but you can get, take your little electric scooter.
One wheel. I want to sit on the one wheel.
Okay.
Chairman? So when will, will that be developed last, the commercial? Okay. Then what size and type of lots are you looking at? 40-foot wide? Forty-foot wide, fifty-foot wide? How, how big are the houses? I mean, I'm, just an idea of what you think.
Sure. Yeah, great question, Chairman and Supervisor, Adella. Um, we, it's a diverse, diverse offering of, of housing types in here, and that's, that's great. That's, that's, I think, uh, what's really needed, especially in this market. So we do have single-family detached homes, kind of the traditional homes, um, with forty-foot wide lots, but we've, we've limited the number of those so that it doesn't build out completely. So that'll be capped at a maximum of thirty percent of the overall housing product in area A, and that's, that's the area that would allow for that. Um, and then we do have provisions in the zoning that say there has to be distinct differences in lot size stepping up, uh, from that. So, um, so those, those lots can then increase from, from that minimum width.
If I could, to add to your question in regards to how fast this would develop on the commercial side, we've already, um, have already sold all the development around the Home Depot in that area right there, and there's, um, retailers and individuals that do this type of development, standing in the wings, waiting for projects like this that are going to be ready to go. And so they've already been con- like, con in our office and asking about this particular project, and, and if there's a, an agree, if they can work something with, um, kind of an agreement between them and Pulte Homes. Is it Pulte that's going in there?
Pulte and DR.
That's looking, yeah, DR.
Well, I, you don't know. You don't know what's going to sell when. I mean, it's, the market's going to decide. If there's a guy that needs a commercial corner, he'll be, he'll be knocking at your door. So it's left up to the market.
So, okay, so I personally have an issue with forty-foot wide lots, but, uh, what's, what are they in Copper Basin right down south of that?
Uh, we, uh, there are homes in there that are forty-five wide, um, lots that are forty-five wide, so we're not too far off of that, and that was, that was, I was speaking to that compatibility.
Yeah, because when you do a forty-foot lot and you say two-car garage is, say, twenty feet wide at a minimum, and you got five feet on either side, so there's thirty feet off the lot, and they get a ten-foot wide front door, basically. You walk into a space that you can throw a coat in, it's not really a room, and it's just this long shotgun house. Another five feet makes an amazing difference in the width of the lot and the width of the home, because then you're not looking at a window, front door, garage door, window, front door, garage door, all the way down the street, and that's what those look like. Because you don't set them back far enough off the, off the street to where you can get a car on the driveway hardly. So that's my issue with forty-foot lots.
But only thirty percent of them will be.
That's thirty percent too many.
Okay, that's, that's fine. And, and I mean, that's, that's, you know, if that's where you're at.
Well, and the other thing, and I know this is probably not the case, but, I mean, the point to bring it up, but many of our roads are very narrow, and so that's something that our planning department, as these come forward, they're going to be looking at these roads to make sure that we have the right amount of space in these roads. We've had so many developments come out in this area that haven't given enough passage, people parking on the, on the roads and things like that, so.
You're going to lose thirty percent of your landmass to road streets and retention.
Yeah. That's fine, but.
No, I know.
Forty-five-foot lots at a minimum would be my personal choice, I mean, just saying.
And if it's.
We're not here doing that, we're not doing.
Oh, I'm not doing any planning, I'm just, I'm just making my, you know, my.
I want, I think we're making sure that our planning department hears that.
That, yeah, that's okay.
Miss Ober.
So, um, I think, is there any more questions or comments to the presenter?
No.
Hi, how are you? You want to say something?
It's okay.
Yeah. Identify yourselves.
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, and Supervisors, um, great to be back before you again, as Alex said, on this historic day, that was a big thing to watch from the overflow room, so congratulations on that. Carolyn Overholzer, forty-three, forty-three, East Camelback, Phoenix, here, um, in support of RVI as well as the state land department. I just wanted to make a few clarifying points just for the land department. Um, so this, the areas A and B are under an auction application from the home builders. So Pulte and DR Horton, um, this auction had been previously scheduled, but the entitlement, w- w- we had to go back and, and redo some of the entitlements. What to do about area C, um, took some extended time, because that area is not within a CCNN for water. So this area, A and B are ready to go, but we didn't want to hold area C back, we want to get areas A and B going, but then also zone area C so that it can all be done together so that when these homeowners are buying into this community, they know what it's zoned on the front edge to Hunt Highway, and so that we have this master circulation worked in. So just on the question of timing, that, that would be a separate auction application, that would not actually be within the Pulte and DR Horton application, which will go to public auction, and as you know, anybody can show up and build, um, or can purchase at the auction, but they have been designing this application. So then also to the question of lot sizes, um, those lot sizes do exist in Copper Basin on that adjacent parcel to A three, um, and I also just wanted to point out that there is a very significant drainage channel that will be running along the east and the south side of the project, and so one of the reasons that the land department, um, it was important to support them on this minimum lot size, but having a diversity, but having a cap on them, and then the overall density cap, is we also were hearing from our home builders that that's a fundamental component of their lot mix lineup, um, in communities such as this with, in the infrastructure costs that come with them. But also, you'll notice that we have a lot of diagonal lines that we're dealing with here, and from a design standpoint, having that flexibility on that width can help to alleviate some difficulties in planning where we are able to put lots around a corner and it, and on a, um, tighter space. So they all have the minimum depths that you see typically, but that is also why, uh, we've supported that, but with the limit, um, that Alex mentioned and also the density limit. So with that, that, from the land department's perspective, I just wanted you to understand where we were in the auction process. Once this is entitled, the appraisal will be updated on this land, and it will go to auction likely in the second quarter of next year.
Got all that?
Yeah.
Clear as the moon. Let's open up the public hearing. I'm opening up the public hearing. Anybody like to comment on this? Seeing none? Closing the public hearing.
Can I just make, just a comment, and that is, is that I.
Clarification, that public hearing was for all three? Okay.
Okay.
So you and I are on the same page.
I just want to tell the state land department how much we appreciate their efforts over the last several years since I've been in office to help us to kind of navigate through some of the issues that we have, particularly in the Santan Valley, by making some of their properties available and giving the entitlements that bring, will help bring in more economic growth in the area. So thank you guys for doing this.
Okay. Board's pleasure.
You take each one of them individually, right?
Yes, that's voted separately.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move then that we approve item sixteen as presented with no stipulations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Four-one. Item number seventeen.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve item number seventeen as presented with, is there any stipulations?
Yes, one.
One, one stipulation.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
And then item number eighteen. I need a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number eighteen as presented with fifteen stipulations.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Eyes have it. Thank you very much. Number nineteen, public hearing component to this one as well, resolution number two-zero two-five, SUP zero-two-four-dash-two-three-A, resolution approving and SUP, Kathy Rowe.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. Patrick Sayer-Roberts, Senior Planner, presenting on case SUP zero-twenty-four-twenty-three. This is a request for a special use permit to allow a commercial kennel on a property in the GR General Rural Zoning District. Uh, the property in question is two and a half acres and is located at five-three-four-eight-zero, West Bolin Road in Maricopa. Uh, the owner of the property is Kathy Rowe, and the property is in Supervisor District One.
Oh, boy.
This is a county map showing the approximate location of the kennel. A zoning map showing the property surrounded by GR properties. A vicinity map showing the property in question in the context of surrounding zoning categories and jurisdictions. And an aerial map showing the, uh, existing site and the surrounding context. This is a notification area map showing the neighbors immediately affected by the, uh, development. An image looking north onto the property. Another image looking north towards the property. And east. This is a, a conceptual site plan that was provided by the applicant, showing the, um, existing and proposed layout for the, uh, the kennel. Additionally, just to add, that this, uh, this kennel in question does classify as a nonprofit rescue, um, and intends to, uh, hold between, uh, seventy to a hundred dogs. Uh, this is a copy of the GR zoning code that, uh, kind of shows the contextual, uh, comparison to the surrounding zoning categories and, um, existing uses on the property. A lot of the, uh, kennel uses can kind of be, contribute towards the commercial ag uses that are considered, uh, as part of livestock or farming operations. This is a section of the code, um, as part of the special use permit section, which allows for additional uses as described by the Planning and Zoning Commission under condition O, and, um, the SUP development standards that are applied for, uh, certain determinations that are required for SUP developments. So this property is one of five similar existing commercial kennels that were proposed before the Planning and Zoning Commission for an SUP action as part of the January eighteenth, twenty twenty-four Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Uh, the property is located amongst other properties with rural and agricultural uses and animal husbandry operations. Uh, the commercial kennel is, is, uses existing and does not present immediate impact to public health, safety, or welfare to the surrounding neighbors. The SUP approval shall make compatible the existing use with surrounding land uses. The kennel business classifies as a five-oh-one-C-three nonprofit as a dog rescue. Uh, the property features improvements to accommodation, to accommodate for the kennel use, and the kennel began operation twenty twenty. Uh, the property was then subject to a co-compliance case as part of CC zero-two-one-five-twenty-two. The applicant was proactive in seeking to resolve that co-compliance violation on the property and came to us to try and bring the property into compliance. Uh, the applicant has identified a business niche and articulate need in their, their community by housing these, these dogs. As of the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, staff has received three comments of support, including a letter of support from the city of Eloy, um, the mayor, excuse me, and, uh, staff has received no letters of opposition for this case. At the Planning and Zoning Commission, the commission voted to recommend approval of this case six to zero with twelve stipulations applied. At this point, does the board have any questions of staff?
Six, oh, there's ten of them. Well, could, could we see the stipulation?
There's ten, so that is a core.
Yeah.
Could you?
Would the board like me to read the, the stipulations?
I'm just, sure.
Let's put them up.
Read them.
The stipulation one, the special use permit is issued to the land and shall be binding on the property owner from date of the board supervisor's approval. Stipulation two, approval of the special use permit SUP will require at time of application for development, the applicant owner or developer submit and secure from the applicable inappropriate federal, state, county, and local regulatory agencies all required applications, plans, permits, supporting documentation, and approvals. Three, the applicant shall secure and maintain a commercial kennel license issued from Pinell County Animal Control for the duration of business operations. The applicant shall adhere to all standards as required by Pinell County Animal Control. Four, the applicant or property owner shall submit a site plan application within one year from the effective date of the resolution, or the special use permit will become null and void. Five, the commercial kennel uses shall be limited to rescue operations as described in the application narrative. Expansion of commercial kennel uses shall be contingent upon amendment to the approved SUP by the board supervisors. Six, SUP zero-twenty-four-twenty-three shall meet lighting zone one requirements. Seven, new signage on the site shall not be permitted. Eight, the applicant property owner shall meet the requirements of the International Fire Code as adopted by Pinell County and administered by the Pinell County Building Safety Department. Nine, a desk registration permit from Pinell County Air Quality Control District shall be obtained prior to the disturbance of point one acres or more. Ten, all construction activity must conform to the earth movement activity requirements of the Pinell County Air Quality Co- Control District. Eleven, a traffic impact statement may be required to be submitted to the county engineer at time of site plan and supplemental review and approval. The TIs shall comply with the current Pinell County Traffic Impact Assessment Guidelines and Procedures and shall be approved prior to the site plan approval. And twelve, a drainage report may be required to be submitted to the county engineer at the time of site plan and supplemental review and approval, and the drainage report shall comply with the current Pinell County Drainage Manual and shall be approved prior to the site plan approval. The drainage plan shall be in accordance with the current Pinell County Drainage Manual. The approved drainage plan shall also, shall provide retention for storm waters in an on-lot retention area.
Thank you. Is, Mr. Chair, is, uh, it seems like in the past we've seen where there's a stipulation that would say that the SUP doesn't pass on to, to another owner. Is that sta- I mean, that's standard, Greg?
Uh, typically, yes, the, these, um, would carry with the owner and not the land.
I didn't.
Yes, in this case, stipulation one indicates the SUP.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Is issued to the land and shall be binding on the property owner from the date of the board supervisor's approval, therefore.
I didn't catch that one, because you were like.
My apologies.
What was, what was the, um, original, um, code of, code compliance, uh, complain about? I mean, I'm kind of curious, because, and they're going to spend a lot of money, they have to meet all of those drainage and site plans and.
Also.
And was, and I, let me stack on some other stuff on my, my question. I mean, was there facilities that need to be built, and that was why it wasn't in compliance or that? What was the, what's the backstory on this?
The facilities are, are existing, um, the applicant may be able to speak better to the history of the co-compliance complaint themselves, uh, and we also have co-compliance here as well that may be able to speak to some of the, the circumstances pertaining to the case, but ultimately, the, um, existing, the kennel facilities are existing on the property. Those wouldn't necessarily need to be improved, but a minor site plan would need to be followed by the applicant in order to, uh, ensure that the property was in, in compliance continuing forward, uh, if this SUP were granted. Uh, and the, as for the conditions of specifically why the, the co-compliance case was issued, uh, there was a determination that the, the, uh, property was conducting a commercial kennel on the site, which doesn't comply with the land uses as provided by GR properties. GR zoning, excuse me.
So, and, and the fact that it's a nonprofit doesn't exempt it from being commercial.
It does not, um, and additionally, if it were a non-commercial kennel, that's also not per- uh, permitted provisionally by the GR code. Um, this classification as, as a commercial kennel allows them to be able to collect revenue, uh, which is still part of their five-oh-one-C-three operations.
Right. Okay.
I think the other side of this, Mr. Chair, is that, how many dogs are there now? Because it's something about.
It said a hundred dogs.
It said seventy to a hundred dogs.
We have, we've, yes, approximately in that, in that range.
That is a lot of dog.
The applicant can speak to that additionally.
Okay, and, and they, they have issued a card, and I'll, I'll allow it here in a minute, but, um, I just, I'm just trying to get staff's perspective on this thing, because, see, how we got there.
Ultimately, um, this, this property aligns with the same conditions that were applied to the five other cases, and these, these cases were largely heard in similar contexts.
I don't remember, I don't remember the traffic impact study, and I don't remember the drainage on those other two, were they?
They were, um, they were waived as part of the conditions for the.
But they're not waived on this one.
They may, they may still have that potential through the county engineer, but there is a stipulation a lot, requiring that as part of the minor site plan.
A lot of that has to do with the magnitude of.
Well, yeah, I mean, this isn't, this is, this, how many acres total?
Two and a half.
Two and a half.
The other part, yeah.
Okay. Configuration of it looked different than the others. Like I said, that didn't matter. All right, any other questions for staff?
I don't.
Okay.
Chairman, I just wanted to ask, how long has this been in, um, uh, has this been running? How long has it been open? Did they sign a non-commercial? Did they sign a non-commercial kennel license from the beginning or a commercial kennel license from the beginning?
So my understanding is the property has been operating since 2020. And someone from animal controls here that could probably better answer that question, but I believe that they have been operating with a commercial kennel license from the Pinal County Animal Care and Control.
Okay. We have more, obviously, we need.
Okay. Does the applicant want to present?
Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Board Supervisors, Anne Patrick, thank you very much for having us here today and being here with us.
Okay, identify yourself, please.
My name is Kathy Rowe. My address is 53480 West Bolin Road, Maricopa, 85139.
I haven't opened the public hearing, but I can. Do you want to address any questions that you heard earlier?
Well, the question about how many dogs we have right now, we have sixty-five and we're working to get it down to fifty. That's our goal is to get it down to fifty. We have thirty-five enclosures for the dogs. When we first went there, they were free roaming on the property. And Pinal County asked us to build enclosures and put them in. I mean, we did have some enclosures for dogs that couldn't get along with other dogs, but for the most part, they were, excuse me, they were all free roaming on the property, which is the way I prefer it.
Which department? Which department?
What do you mean? Oh, animal control.
Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, there are sixty-five dogs currently there and we're working to get it down to fifty.
Okay. Okay, any questions for the applicant?
How do you work to get it to fifty?
Through adoptions.
Through adoption?
Yes, we take them out to adoptions at PetSmart and other local places. We went to the Lowe's grand opening in Maricopa. I think we've been there three times with ranch dogs, we call them ranch dogs, but for adoption, so, yeah, we do put them up for adoption.
Thank you. Chair, just to let you guys know, I've actually, in the past four months, I've driven by four or five times, poked my head through the metal gate that's leaned forward and haven't heard a peep. And I did it all different times. I knocked on the door once, but I actually drove by, got out of my car, stuck my head through the door, and was surprised I didn't hear a bark. So I just want to let you guys know, this thing is, I don't know how many dogs are there, but I didn't hear or see or smell anything in the area. They got block walls around the whole place and it was amazing. And I also wanted to ask, we had a letter from the Eloy mayor, just curious how the Eloy mayor is involved with this, if there's any.
Well, he has fostered a couple of dogs for us. And he's good friends with a long-term foster that we have, Tina. And part of why he is involved with this process is because we are saving Pinal County money by taking these dogs in. We fix them, we adopt them out, we feed them, we care for them, we do all of their vetting, and there's no cost to Pinal County for that.
Is there a financial coming from the city of Eloy? I'm curious.
No, it just frees up money in the Pinal County, like we free up money so that he can operate his, you know, animal control.
Okay.
You say fix them? Are you neutering them?
Pardon me?
You say fix them? Are you neutering them?
Oh, yes. Every dog is spayed, neutered, microchipped, they all have their shots.
One of you a vet?
Pardon me?
Is one of you a vet?
No, we work with Dr. Kelly's North Phoenix Animal Clinic and trusted Paws.
Whole new world out there.
But you did your own?
Well, I've done sheep.
Oh, we don't do it that way.
I've married a basketball man, so that's a whole nother story.
I do have an answer to.
Okay, I need to open the public hearing unless you have more information you want to share with us.
I have an answer to how this all got started was actually by a citizen of Waddell. For some reason, they had something out against us. We really do not know why, but they have made it practically impossible for us. They called Pinal County Animal Control every day for about forty-five days. You know, we do not know what their beef was against us, but that's, they brought it to planning and zoning.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anybody like to comment on this?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair and Supervisors. My name's Bettina Potter. I live at 11918 East Mariposa Grande Drive, Scottsdale, Arizona. Orphanage Dog Rescue is truly a passion and emotional endeavor. We have a last litter program, which means that when people want to bring their mama dogs to us or we get their mama dogs, we fix them at our charge and we return those dogs to the owner should they want them. Because we don't believe families should be without pets. We do believe that families should not necessarily be breeding all of their pets, so we try to stop the process that way. We also have a first responders and pets for vets program and anybody who qualifies for that is available, they're able to get a dog from us that's a certain age and meets their needs and it's at, we waive the fee for that. So our rescue brings in grant money and donations and money from adoptions and that's solely what we live on. And in terms of we, I mean the dogs, because all of us that are fosters across the state and have taken dogs in or work in various roles within orphanage dog rescue, it's a total volunteer operation with the exception of the staff we have at the ranch, the paid staff. We all try to do what's best for the pets and make sure that we are providing a public service at the same time. So I'm happy to answer any questions. My role is I'm fundraising chair for the rescue and trying to get funds to be able to continue our process. We've been in business about eleven years, in total nonprofit for ten. Any questions?
Well, you've come under public comment, so we don't have a lot of chance to answer.
Oh, sorry.
But that's okay. I think we, I think we got it covered.
Okay.
Unless there's any other questions for, huh, everybody good? Oh, we have another person. That's all the cards I had, but you don't have to have a card, so come on.
I wasn't going to speak today. My name is Tina. I live at 15566 West Jimmy Kerr Boulevard in Casa Grande. No, Tina Morrison, sorry. I've been with the rescue for about ten years, fostering, volunteering, it's a labor of love. I wanted to touch on your asking like how Andy had been involved or how we're significant when people don't want to or can't send dogs to Pinal County because they're overpopulated right now. They had been free from doing euthanasias for a long time and unfortunately they're having to euthanize dogs because of space right now again, which breaks all of our hearts. We as a rescue will a lot of times pull from the E-list. When I started out with Kathy, one of my main things was to pull the dogs that were behavioral and that were going to be euthanized because nobody else would and work with them. Sometimes it took a year to adopt them out, but we did everything we could because every life matters. And now what we kind of do is when people reach out and they say, hey, I can't keep this dog, what do we do? People go, we'll contact a rescue. The shelters are full, contact a rescue. We're the ones that are contacted. We're the ones that go out and take that dog if it's fearful, if it's not adoptable, if it's ultimately going to die at county because they can't work with it, we work with it. We find fosters that specialize in medical needs, fear, socialization, behavioral aggression, and we do the hard work. We have taken dogs from Eloy, I took two poodle Havanese that were in awful medical condition from them. They were a bonded pair and had to be adopted together and we found that special home for them. So that's kind of the work we do in, that some people aren't aware of what we do and we make sure that they're all medically sound before they go. Like Kathy had said, they're vaccinated, they're spayed, neutered. We want to stop overpopulation. Overbreeding, whether on purpose or on accident, is a really big problem and we want to stop that so there isn't the overpopulation problems in like the county.
Okay.
That was it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing. Board's pleasure.
I just wanted to ask, Chairman, about the co-compliance, animal control about the complaints. My question would be, one particular person making forty-five days in a row, is that what I heard correctly?
I'm not too sure about that complaint. I only got my records back from 2020, so it was probably before then.
Okay.
But I mean, we haven't had maybe a complaint here and there once a year, if anything, so it's not anything, they all been unfounded or either resolved through compliance.
A surrounding neighbor or somebody from?
I couldn't tell you. If you want, you can contact me and I'll be happy to send some records over to you, but other than that.
What would the typical complaint be? Was it odor or is it barking? It's usually the two things.
So usually, for one of them was a roam in 2022, we had a neglect in 2024 and 2022, but again, those were either resolved through compliance or unfounded. Especially kennels, they get complaints all the time for neglect, so we have to investigate them. Most of the time they're unfounded. I'm not going to say particularly each one of these two which was which, but that's usually the case for them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Everybody up?
And my name is Alex Robinson. I'm the field supervisor for Pinal County Animal Control.
Thank you. Do you need a copy of what he just read, Natasha? Okay. All right, board's pleasure.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item nineteen as read with twelve stipulations.
Of a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those say nay? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Supervisors. My name is Valentin Panchenko Planner and I'm here to present to you the case SCP 00425, title names Sky Village Dino Park. This is a request to approve a special use permit to operate an educational and recreational facility that focuses on the dinosaur of the Mesozoic era. It's located east of intersection of West Highway eighty-four and Green Road in Maricopa Stanfield area. There is three parcels with total area over ten acres and the applicant represented here today by Greg Davis, a plant consulting. Here is a general location of the site, south of Maricopa. Here is existing zoning, dominantly it's GR with some commercial and industrial fractions in some distance from the site. Here's a vicinity map. Here's aerial map, it's mostly vacant lands. Here's a view on the property to the north, to the south, to the east and to the west, to the east is directly on the site. Here's a notice signs posted. So the subject property has been zoned GR since the very beginning in sixty-two with current configuration finalized following the land split in 2021. The property has direct access to SR eighty-four. It's also surrounded by rural residential with small fraction of commercial, industrial, and other residential within one and a half miles radius. The closest residential area with existing structures is located across Highway eighty-four to the west of the property. It's also located within the Maricopa Association of Governments planning boundaries and city of Maricopa area of interest. Here's a site plan for the proposed development. They have, in their plan, they have dinosaur exhibit park with static and animation models. They have tram style ride traveling around those exhibits. There's also five main structures, buildings, park office ticketing building, there's tram station, maintenance building, restroom facility, and indoor interactive ride building. There are also some notable features about this site plan and the development itself. They are proposing to have daily operation hours from ten AM till dusk. They anticipating to have five to ten staff members. They are expecting to have fifty to sixty guests per day. Their target audience will be families, schools, and some educational groups. Also, they also would like to implement sound mitigation, so there will be no outdoor loud speakers and any sounds will be localized at two individual exhibits. And there will be minimum lighting so they can comply with lighting zone one requirement. That's its requirement for GR zone. According to submitted site plans, they have required parking spaces, they have pedestrian pathways throughout the whole park, they have a tram road, they have landscaping buffer from twenty feet to forty feet on the east side, so the forty feet will be only on this east side, but other sides will be twenty feet. They're also proposing six-foot CMU on the east and south side for screening. They have view fencing along the north and west boundaries, that's mostly for the highway, so people will know and notice what is going on, what is the property about. And the minimum separation between the primary structure and accessory building has been increased comparing to the code requirements from seven feet to ten feet. And they also proposing setback to the side and rear property line to be fifty feet, exceeding the minimum four feet setback. They met all requirements for public participation. There was received one letter of opposition before planning and zoning commission. The main concern was about rural lifestyle and lights going from the property. As a comment from the staff, the current development will need to comply with lighting zone one requirement that is required for all surrounding GR properties, so no matter if it's residential or they will have SCP, they still will need to comply with the same lighting requirements. Planning and zoning commission held meeting on July seventeenth and they recommended approval of this SCP seven to zero, subject to nine stipulations with amended stipulation number three that presented in the staff report. And this stipulation presented to the board with nine stipulation, including that amended one. If board has any question to the staff.
Chairman, I just have the one.
Yeah.
A little concerned about thirty-eight parking spots and only two handicap. You have five to ten employees, so if you just, you know, call that seven, that would leave roughly thirty parking spots. If you're going to have fifty to a hundred and you have buses, if they're students, seems a little tiny on the, little light on the parking spots.
Yeah. Thank you for that question. That question also was raised during the BNZ by committee members and applicant answered to that question that they actually will revise loading space for buses, so they will ensure that buses will have sufficient turning and space for loading and unloading the children from that side and it will be safe. Those concerns actually anyway will be maintained during site plan review, so at that point of time, everybody agree that we can move forward and those issues will be dealt on the site plan review stage. But board as always can add this as stipulation if you wish so, just to emphasize.
If I may?
Yeah, your district.
We have an ordinance for parking.
Yeah, and that's made.
We're going to meet that.
Yeah, they're meeting.
Okay, so we don't need, we don't need to do anything here.
They're meeting.
Because they will be required to follow the ordinance for parking. It's tied to square footages and all different kinds of things, so it's a requirement and they'll meet it or it won't get passed.
So here, they're already meeting the standards, but here additionally, like their reasonable request.
If they want to do that, they can do that. If they want to do that, they can do that on their own, but as long as they meet the standards, I think that.
They do.
If we have, if we have an ordinance that sets that parameter, that's, that's what they're required to do.
Yeah, they meet the requirement.
That's my opinion. Okay. Okay. Okay, do we want, the applicant have anything?
Yes.
This time?
Afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Greg Davis with A Plan Consulting here and we have the property owners, and we just wanted to bring something a little more fun and some levity to what seemed to be a pretty heavy meeting otherwise, so. So I won't have a long presentation, but I'm sure you probably have a couple of questions, like what is a dinosaur park and, you know, why in this area? So those are two things I'll focus on and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. Valentin has addressed most of the code-related issues, but obviously, the site located along State Route eighty-four, it can seem like it's in a pretty rural area, but when we actually look at some distances, we're only twelve miles south of the current city boundary of Maricopa and seventeen miles west of Casa Grande, so really, we're fifteen to twenty minutes away from pretty too large growing areas. And when we look at, and overall, this is the, the planning area for the city of Maricopa, you can see the overlay for Midway and a couple of the master plans are only two and a half miles away, so it may seem rural and kind of out there right now, but it is only a short matter of time before there's actually quite a bit of population in that area. One thing else I'll point out about this land use planning map is that you can see it's already kind of positioned to be commercial and employment and more intense uses than what it currently exists today. So as I drove out there, when the client contacted me, I'm like, you know, this just kind of seems way ahead of its time, but when I looked into it further, you can see that it's actually going to come to fruition, very much in line with what's already planned for that area. So question about what is a dinosaur park and what does that include? So the site plan will kind of just quickly go over. We talked about access. We do anticipate looking at parking again at the next level. We just designed something that met code today. We hope we have to have a lot more parking, and the site is actually quite a bit bigger than we need, so we can accommodate certainly a lot more parking as we get into that, but we did provide the minimum code spaces there. The, you know, facility, the parking areas, the ticket booths are all on the west side, and then as you move east into the site, that's when you'll get into the attractions. There's a tram that goes around the site. It follows that pattern you can see on the screen there. And then there's also two different walking paths that are within there. And then all those little circles with the D in them, they represent what are going to be the exhibits, and there's several different types of exhibits. I just brought a few examples here to really kind of demonstrate it. The point is really to make more kind of an immersive experience, something fun. It is going to be geared towards kids, so we want to avoid more of the dinosaur bones in the museum with, you know, some graphics images. We wanted to provide something that's more fun, life, you know, lifelike in what it may actually be like, colors, spacing, et cetera. So these are some examples that, of animatronic and static machines that will be populated throughout this project, along with some placards that talk about, you know, what they like to eat, how much they weigh and et cetera. So it's really meant to be more of a fun, immersive experience than your more traditional museum. Now, this is for the bad kids, you know, the behavior, this velociraptor is going to get you, but just a variety of all these things out there that honestly, I didn't even know this, this was a, you know, production field. There's quite a bit of producers in the southwest United States that make these, for these purposes, so. So that's the intent of it, of the project itself, and we did meet with the neighbors. There's a few folks that live out there, own land, that plan to build out there, so we want to be sensitive to them. We're complying with all of the code requirements as far as setbacks and buffering are concerned, but we are providing an extra buffer along our east boundary, because that is the one side where we do have an owner that plans to subdivide and build homes at some point in the future. So if that occurs, we just wanted to make sure we had accounted for buffering so that that property owner wasn't impacted by our use. That is also reflected in our building setbacks as well, which exceed code on that east side. From a wall standpoint, we are proposing a solid wall to control any kind of noise or light mitigation along our east, south, and west boundaries, but we will put a, kind of a combination view fence along the street front edge to help soften that along the street and also to help welcome and identify this as a commercial use, so it is hopefully successful. We've talked about the operation, and so I'll kind of conclude with just talking that we did look at some of the impacts. This is a special use permit, so we made sure to go through and look at noise, lighting, and especially traffic, that was one concern some residents did have. State Route eighty-four is a major road, it easily accommodates the traffic, so our traffic study that we did ahead of time showed that there's no measurable impact on, on the road and traffic in that area. So I'll conclude the presentation and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Chair, none of the, none of the neighbors are worried about the animals escaping here? That could happen.
That did actually, that was asked.
Was it?
So yes, no, that, most people are pretty excited about it. You know, they think there needs to be some activity in this area and they're looking forward to it, so we'll keep them chained up tightly.
I have a grandson that'll want an annual pass, so.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions of the applicant? Want to open up the public hearing? Anybody like to speak to this item today? Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item twenty as presented.
With?
Well, I'm sorry, with, like nine stipulations.
Second. I have a motion, and I have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those say nay? Ayes have it. With no further business before this, board, we're adjourned.